Trustees attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence. Could you turn your cameras on when I call your name?
Vice Chair Murphy.
Are you online? Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, I'm here.
Trustee Powell, are you? Trustee Powell? Trustee Powell is not here. Call to order, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Holden College District School Board on June seventeen, two thousand and twenty five. Please note that this board meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams. We automatically placed in queue. Tonight, we have guests in our boardroom and I want to extend a very warm welcome to all of you. Thank you for attending our board meetings. Your short meetings, today's going to be a long meeting, but you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, the Our Father, National Anthem. And now our staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawangaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Student trustee, Filbert, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father, National Anthem?
So we can start with the opening prayer. I thought since this is very fitting as we're coming to the close at the end of our school year. And this is our final board meeting. I'd like if you can all can join me in the sign of our faith in Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. God of wisdom, we thank you for all the gifts you have given us throughout this school year. We praise you for giving us life, for saving us in Christ, and for choosing us to be your people. As we come to the end of this school year, we voice our gratitude for the good things you have done in us. And we praise you for all who have shared in the work of this school community. We ask you to bless them in your love and give them refreshment and peace. We praise you, God, through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen.
The Our Father?
I'm sorry. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, honor thy sayings. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, student trustee Filbert. Item one point two motions arising from in camera, there was one motion from the in camera session that will require a vote in this public session. I will now read the motion. Result that the internal audit plan for two thousand and twenty five, twenty six be implemented as described. May I have a mover, please?
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chanada moves, trustee Saunders, I saw your hand up. Trustee Saunders seconds it, I shall now call the vote on this item. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee O'Hern Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yabo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda? And do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Saying none? Saying none, may I have a summary to move that we approve the agenda, looking for a mover, please? Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a secondor. Trustee Saunders. I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yabo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Kennedy?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the agenda is now approved. We shall now move on to next order of business, which is declarations of conflicts of interest. Trustees, do we have any conflicts of interest to be declared? Trustee Kelly declares a conflict, on which item, trustee Kelly?
Action nine point three.
Sorry?
Action item nine point three.
Nine point three? There is a form to fill, you could fill it, okay. Any other trustee? Saying none? We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is presentation, item, item number four, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is grade nine, ten, Caribou Math Competition winner, Director Klein. Would you like to introduce this presentation?
Certainly Chair, and thank you. We'll bounce this over to Superintendent Skripic in a moment. But I would like to welcome our guests and applaud the work of at least one of them who's here tonight. They say failure is an orphan, but success has many, many parents, and so we're all taking, we'll ride the wake of the work that you've done, young man. Caribou is something that speaks to the spirit of competition, not only with others, but more importantly with, for ourselves. That I think moves all, all humanity forward in many ways, notwithstanding where we are in our lives. And of course, moving forward in mathematics is important in so many ways, not just in terms of pathways, but in terms of the beauty of mathematics. And so we'd like to have Superintendent Skripic talk a bit about, more about this competition and then to celebrate a perfect timing too, for the end of the year to have this, we really, you're a godsend in many ways for us tonight and for beyond your families, but for this board, so take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And trustees, I'd much to present to you today, Max Bimintow. So Max's big accomplishment, the board has been funding and supporting the writing of math competitions for many years now, most recently the Caribou Math Competition, which is an international competition for kids around the world. Max had a huge accomplishment, person in the world. And I did say this with great modesty, I'd love to put up even one of those questions that Max tried and that you could all give it a try and see just, you know, how much more applause he deserves for this. But not to be outdone, I just also want to point out that Max, maybe because he wanted to prove that he was, the Caribou wasn't just one of the contests, he also wrote the University of Waterloo Math Contest this year. And had high distinction and high standing in the current Canadian Intermediate Mathematics Competition, the Friar Mathematics Competition, the Fermat Math Competition, Max, oh, and Pascal. So, and we're talking scores, and in some of these competitions, we know the top score is one hundred and fifty, you'll learn about this in a sec, in a little bit in my presentation, Max scored in the high one forties in many of these. So the exciting thing is Max grade nine right now. So we get to enjoy his presence in our board for many, many years and the gift that he has, which I'm sure he'll be sharing with his colleagues over at Old Eternity. And possibly throughout the board and through mentorship, because we're looking forward to seeing some great accomplishments. So today, together with the chair and the director, we have some presentations for you, Max. Do you want to come over there? Well, how about we go over there? Yeah, come over there. Because then there's a nice backdrop over here.
The chair, what do you know, was enjoying the next was across the country.
And I also want to recognize the hard work of the schools as we do this. The vice principal of the school, Poitier Kvitsky, and I'm not sure how you say this in English, so I just said Poitier. Sure, okay.
Trustees, if you'd like to, you have any comments, would like to say anything? This is your time, please raise your hand up.
Trying to get my hand up.
Oh. Oh, I don't see your hand up here, but trustee Saunders, you have.
Yeah, just, I'd like to congratulate Max, I mean, what a wonderful thing, I've seen you your whole life and I didn't realize that I should be careful backing out of the driveway. So thanks a lot, it's great, great to see you've done well.
Trustee Yabo?
Um, yeah, as a student myself, I'm just like, I'm blown away, that's, that's, that's super impressive, so I mean, I mean, I wish you the best on the rest of your, you know, school journey, I'm in grade eleven now, so almost a grade twelve, but you're in grade nine, so you're doing crazy, so. Yeah, congratulations and I wish you the best, it's fantastic.
Thank you, trustee Filbert?
Yeah, I had the same sentiment as well, I'm a grade twelve, I've taken the grade twelve math, I don't think I could do any of these competitions, so I'm really, really grateful that you're only grade nine and you have so much potential, first in the world, I don't know how much higher you can go, but please continue mentor those around you and we're really excited for your accomplishment, thank you so much.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, just want to congratulate you and recognize the talent that God has blessed you with and that you will share it with the world, as you already have by being first in the world, and share it and help the others and God bless you.
Trustee O'Hern Chanada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, congratulations, Max, amazing, congratulations, Max's parents and guardians, amazing. We will do and I will do everything in my power to continue to fund this program, because I've seen it throughout the years and we can have other students come through and accept these type of awards, so I'll do what I can while I'm in this seat to keep that funding going, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Superintendent Skripic?
Back to you. And just one last comment, as I was trying to slip it in, this can't be done without the support of the school. So Michael Sluski is the the department head and Poitier Kvitsky is the vice principal here, supporting the programming as the vice principal in charge of university at the school. And I can't thank enough of the school's support that they give this, because this is not done on their own, students do need some coaching, some training, sometimes we're blessed with kids that come with the talent, but they also could use the support, so that's what's happening in our schools right now and looking forward to finishing off my report later on.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Skripic, and on behalf of all the trustees who have spoken and who have not spoken, I really want to wish Superintendent Skripic and your math team, first of all, congratulations, Max, on your achievement. It's, it's very difficult to get this award and so we recognize it, our board of trustees is very proud of your achievements. And thank you, Superintendent Skripic, and thank you for your team, your math team behind the scenes for supporting our students, thank you for our teachers. And you promised me something, you said this year we have one award winner, next year we're going to have more, so looking forward to that, thank you, with that, thank you so much. Thanks, all the best, thank you. And you're welcome to stay for our meeting, we move on to item four point two, senior staff updates, mental health strategy and the action plan. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Chair. He waited for transitioning out and in. Just like we rehearsed. Thank you very much, Chair, the staff are very excited to update trustees again, continuing the theme of good news. As seen in our MYSP, we teach the whole child and we support the whole child, it's not just about achievement, it's all about supporting students where they're at. And there's more varieties of where they're at than there are students in this big, beautiful board of ours. And part of that involves the focus on mental health and wellbeing, we used to talk about mental health, but the idea of wellbeing is a part of this holistic approach to it and part of a continuum of health, really markers or stages is something that's important as well, and that we're all really called to, to, to health and wellness. And this is sadly something that we didn't really focus on, certainly when I began in administration, certainly not when I began as a, as an educator many years ago. And so we're very grateful to Superintendent Jack Caldera and her team here, and I will tip it over to her, where she will do some introductions, then we'll begin an update on what we are doing here to support our students, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, as you would have seen in the agenda, a copy of the presentation entitled Mental Health and Addiction Strategy, two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty eight, and the annual action plan, two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty six, has been provided. In Ontario, school boards are required to develop and implement a three-year mental health and addiction strategy alongside a one-year action plan. This is reflected in policy PPM one six nine. These plans must be made public on the board's website by June thirtieth, and today is June seventeenth, so we're going to make that deadline of the prior school year and reflect input from key partners, including students, families, and community mental health providers. School Mental Health Ontario also provides resources and support to help school boards meet these requirements. Tonight, we have Senior Manager of Social Work and our Mental Health Lead Chanel Bernier. Rea Shen, Senior Manager of Child Youth Care Counselors. We have Kim Dawson, Itinerant Child and Youth Care Counselor. And last but certainly not least, Jenna Produce, itinerant social worker for our board. Together, we are your mental health team. I turn it over to these fine members for your hot off the press presentation of our mental health and addiction strategy for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty eight year and our annual action plan for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera, thank you to the Chair and to the board for having us this evening. We go to the next slide, we can show you what we have been up to, last month, we shared with the board what we've been doing over this past year. And today, we'd like to show you a little bit about where we're going. As Superintendent Jack Caldera has shared, we are coming to the close of our two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty five Mental Health and Addiction Strategy. So we have been undertaking a review of the current strategy, there have been consultations with some key stakeholders. And we've been looking at this feedback and where we can go from here. We need to be aligned with both ministry mandates and student needs, so incorporating all of that feedback. We have developed the strategy for two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty eight, and alongside that, the annual action plan, which will operationalize the strategy. I will now turn it over to my colleagues and we will continue.
Just the next slide, please, thank you so much. So Chanel kindly shared with us, the two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty five strategy really laid a strong foundation with the three key priority areas, as you see on the screen here. First being the student mental health and wellbeing, then mentally healthy learning environments, as well as inclusive mental health support and services. Meaningful work, you know, took place very much across the three priorities and was reflected annually in our annual action plans as well. By really reflecting on the strengths, as well as the additional areas of continued growth of the strategy, while centering the valuable feedback that we have been receiving from students, staff, and additional areas. As of course, including community partners, families, and various stakeholders, we were truly able to thoughtfully shape the next part of our phase, the two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty eight strategy, which will be shared in the following slide. Thank you. So as you can see on the screen here, the two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty eight upcoming strategy of the mental health addictions contains the four main focuses. First, amplifying student leadership and participation to increase parent and caregiver engagement, to enhance mental health support across all tiers, as well as to strengthen system collaboration. You know, we're certainly not looking at all of these priorities in isolation, but rather a collaboration. We're really moving forward in all four, together and intentionally through coordinated actions at both the school as well as the system levels. Each year, we will be developing an annual action plan that really brings these goals into life. We truly have a dedication and commitment that every student deserves to feel safe, supported, and seen. And this strategy certainly helps us to take those meaningful steps towards making that a reality across our board and continue in our wonderful efforts to do so. And at this time, I would like to invite Kim and Jenna to review some of the details of the strategy in the upcoming year.
Next slide, please. So these are some of the actions that will support the goal of amplifying student leadership and participation in the coming school year. We plan to continue the Student Mental Health Champions Program and support the expansion in every elementary school, so that more students benefit from learning about wellness from their peers. We will be sharing resources with every school to promote help seeking and to reduce stigma surrounding mental health. Next, we aim to expand on student leadership by creating opportunities for students to promote mental health and wellbeing in their schools. This will be through increased participation, planning, and delivery of mental health and wellbeing activities. We will support schools and the creation and maintenance of a mental health and wellbeing corkboard, so that students and staff have access to quality information about mental health and wellbeing. To increase parent and caregiver engagement, we will be focusing on these areas in the coming school year. We will work in partnership with community agencies who can share with the HCDSP community information and resources about student wellbeing. We will incorporate feedback from the Mental Health Advisory Committee to expand membership, and we will review the terms of reference to broaden the reach of the committee. We will be sharing parent and caregiver resources through the newly created Mental Health and Wellbeing website, through social media, and other channels on a regular basis. Last, the mental health team looks forward to prioritizing availability to support system-wide events, to connect with caregivers, and share information in resources relating to student mental health and wellbeing.
Some of the ways we will work to continue enhancing mental health support across all tiers. So the mental health team will share resources that are culturally responsive and identity-affirming with the system that can be incorporated into teaching and support practices, as well as those that can be provided directly to students. We will provide learning opportunities to HCDSP staff in a variety of formats on topics related to mental health and wellbeing. The Social Work Department is in the process of exploring the use of measurement-based care to be more responsive to student mental health needs and enhanced service delivery needs. There are newly created identity-affirming positions in the CYC Department to support students who identify as Black, Indigenous, and two S LGBTQIA+. Actions prioritized in the next school year to strengthen system collaboration include supporting school and system leaders in implementing the, the leading mentally healthy schools framework from School Mental Health Ontario, collaborating with community mental health agencies with, and our co-terminus board to implement the vision of right time, right care, and ensuring students have access to timely mental health supports. And last, exploring internal and external service support, service pathways, so that staff, students, and caregivers are aware of how to appropriately connect students with services that they need.
Bringing this all together, this is our vision for the next three years, that students are at the core of everything that we do and are leaders in their schools when it comes to mental health promotion. We're looking at having parents and caregivers and schools be partners in supporting students through their wellbeing needs. We're also looking at ways that we can make sure that every staff member in school buildings are there to support students or direct them to the services that they need. And we're also looking at ways that we can collaborate with our community partners to ensure that students have access to the services that they require. All this will be done in an annual action plan that gets reviewed and updated every year. And all of the work that we do is supported and guided with our coach from School Mental Health Ontario. Turn it over to Rea.
We all know that good mental health is, it's truly essential for students and of course, in our classrooms and our hallways and our schools, but also in life in general as well. Our two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty eight Mental Health Addiction Strategy is closely aligned with our HCDSP multi-year strategic plan, recognizing that when students feel well, they're more likely to achieve, believe, belong, and become as well. This strategy is about building that supportive. This strategy is about building that supportive, identity-affirming and inclusive environments where every student can thrive. The full strategy and the 2025 to 2026 annual plan, as shared earlier, will be available at the HCDSP website by June 30th, as required by the Ministry of Education as well as School Mental Health Ontario. And at this time, we would truly like to thank each and every one of you at this table here, our students, our trustees, our members of the board, Director Klein, as well as our senior leadership team. And of course, Superintendent Jack Caldera for your continued leadership and guidance and support. And at this time, if there are any questions, we would be more than happy to take them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation. We have a speaker's list here and I'll give trustees the opportunity to speak to you. Trustee Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to start off first of all by saying, you know, thank you for the focus and the dedication to mental health and all the associated resources. For a long time, you know, mental health wasn't something we spoke about, let alone these types of, you know, resources and commitment to. So thank you so much for that. I know our students are better for it, as we are as parents and caregivers as well. The second piece that I wanted to ask about was with respect to our students who have special education needs, our students with disabilities, we know that our, you know, our students' census data shows us that they struggle in unique ways with respect to belonging and all of those different pieces. And we know that, you know, students, individuals who have disability or a medical condition will often feel the pressure of these mental health challenges in unique ways. So is work being done to try to be intentional in how we approach that population of students? And sorry if that's a big question, but it's an important one.
I'll pass it to Superintendent Jack Caldera first and then go ahead.
Through you, Chair. It's a great question. And that's why I think the portfolios are so connected. So we did actually engage in those conversations. And I think it was just a couple of months ago, we did have a presentation. I could pull the name up. Jonathan Weiss was a doctor who helped our department learn and kind of explore the cross-section of having autism or being on the spectrum and mental health. And it really sparked big conversations around like, how do we continue to look at some of our exceptionalities? Not in isolation, but in addition to how do we make sure that they're supported and that they're mentally healthy? I also sit on another committee and we're looking at the resource development at School Mental Health Ontario and some of the conversation that I'm able to bring with the portfolio of both the special education and mental health services for students is that need for resources that are adaptable and easily delivered to students that are neurodiverse, verbal, non-verbal. And so I'm really hopeful around that contribution and that voice that I get to share at that table. And of course, we, as a faith community, believe that all can achieve and have a sense of belonging. So that is rooted in all that we do. But I don't know if there was anything else I missed. I know that we're engaging in those conversations and that capacity building. And we want to be able to pass that on so that schools can have the resources and parents can have the resources that they need to support their students.
Sorry, through the Chair. That is a focus for us and we are working with School Mental Health Ontario. Some of the resources that Superintendent Jack Caldera has referenced include adaptations of the existing posters for social emotional learning that exist. And I believe there is plans for additional ones. The other PD that all of support services engaged in in early May was identity-affirming approaches to school mental health. And part of that was very much looking at ability at all aspects of identity. And the presenters from School Mental Health Ontario aligned their identity-affirming frame with our HCDSP frame so that we could really see how we are supporting students and how we're aligned with what the provincial expectations are as well.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing that as it progresses. Maybe it's a CAC presentation. But thank you very much. I know that it's been a piece for a while and how we adapt some of those resources and supports will be very key. So thank you for the work you're doing on that.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you're up next.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair, and really to Superintendent Caldera, whoever would like to answer this question. I have two. The first one being, we talked about stigma reducing. And do we feel as a team and as a group, is that stigma reduction moving in the right direction? Because my personal aim and opinion, I think as much as we can reduce the stigma, the better off we're going to be. Are we going in the right direction?
Anybody who would like Superintendent Jack Caldera, you can start with.
I'm looking over at Dr. Colomore. Through you, Chair. We do have the student surveys that help to articulate where we're meeting our goals and where there are areas of needs. I don't want to over, you know, I know that we've seen some trajectory in the right direction, but I don't want to, I don't have the numbers and the statistics right in front of me. But I do feel that our efforts based on all of our survey data that we have collected, we do get some information, solicit information from community partners, including administrators and students. And we do see that there is some impact. Certainly lots of work that we still want to do and we're rolling up our sleeves and ready to do that. But I think we are trending in the right direction.
Thank you. So the day someone can say I'm bipolar as opposed to I have diabetes on the same playing field, I think we've won.
Through the Chair, I also don't have the statistics. I defer to Dr. Colomore. But what we do have is the anecdotal information from our students. So the champions are a great source of information when they talk about what's happening at their schools and when they're coming and talking about their experiences and lived experiences in school and how much more accepted they feel.
That's amazing because you're experts on the ground, boots on the ground, so to speak, with the children. May I have a follow-up? My second question was on, I got two, but I might go back in line, community agencies. Are the amount of support we have for community agencies, are those increasing? Are those going away with funding? Everyone's so concerned about funding. Do we have the community agencies that we need out there now?
Through the Chair. That is an ongoing question and that is a question that perhaps the, another ministry, Ministry of Community and Social Services might be able to answer. What I can say is that one of the Ministry of Education priorities with School Mental Health Ontario is the right-time, right-care framework, where we're looking at what students need and what services they're getting at the right time from the right services. So that requires a coordination between all of the school boards servicing this region, as well as the lead mental health agency. And as we move further through that process, we'll be coming together to look at what is available and looking at the pathways for students as they move across tiers. So we support students across tiers one, two and three. And the community is primarily tier four for the intensive needs. So students may move back and forth across those tiers and we need to be coordinated in how we support them. So community tables are being developed and work is to come.
Thank you very much. And you thanked all of us. We thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Trustee Filbert. You're the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. As a student, the work being done towards mental health, it's very prevalent from a student perspective in schools, there is more information on who to go to, what resources you can have. And so because of that, I fielded a lot of questions about the summer workshop for Mental Health Champions. But for all the students interested, where can they find more information and what does that look like for them this summer?
Okay, I'll pass it on to your team. Yeah, go ahead.
So thank you. That is a great question and so glad that you brought it up. We didn't prompt her in advance. This is the first year that we are very excited that we are expanding the Summer Champions to include a two-day training workshop over the summer. So we will be having a guest speaker. We will also be having community partners and other community agencies coming in to talk about services that they can offer. But we're also looking at gathering this group of secondary students to plan for events that they can lead in their high schools, as well as plan for leading some of the elementary champions. So the flyer should be out in all of the high schools with a QR code for students to register. But happy to field any questions by email if you're, I think my email's on that flyer. If not, happy to have questions fielded and our team will be very excited, the more students that can attend.
Yeah, we follow up? Okay, thank you. Up next is Trustee Yebou.
Thank you through you, Chair. I also wanted to add, just thank you so much for everything you're doing with mental health in schools, because of course, it's a really, really important subject that has to be brought up a lot in schools for sure. And I love what you said about how when students are feeling well, they do well. And I think that's just something that should be, again, taught and brought up a lot in schools. Personally, I've seen my CYC at my school has actually been a lot more visible as of the last couple of months, like doing a couple more pop-ups in the spec or just little things, just to make sure that students know where she is at all times, which is another thing that kind of makes mental health more visible in our schools. Just for my question, just to get to that. But I'm just wondering, in terms of this plan that you guys laid out, what does mental health look like in classrooms specifically? And just like in terms of maybe curriculum and just that kind of stuff? Like, how would that be communicated to students in the classroom?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Through the Chair, thank you. Thank you so much, first of all, for the feedback. And something I'll add is we truly couldn't do this work without students as well, right? So I think that collaboration that's ongoing is so valuable. So thank you so much for that. I think one of the biggest, one of the big focuses this year is really some of that cross-collaboration that you are speaking to in terms of making those intentional connections with the curriculum team as we continue to roll out our mental health litter, my goodness, mental health lit. I always call it that way, so I'm so used to that language. So it's definitely something that we are continuing on so that mental health isn't something that's siloed necessarily, but rather it's something that's embedded into our curriculum and our classrooms as well. And of course, different channels such as Mental Health Champions. I think that is a great way where students are also bringing up these really important topics in the classroom in collaboration with the educators, with the spec staff and everyone else that's in the schools as well. Chanel, did you want to add something as well? Yeah.
Yes, the other piece that we're really excited about is there's a monthly newsletter that is available to all educators, which includes resources from School Mental Health Ontario and some tips and helpful information that's put together by this amazing team here. And that is available to all educators. And there is a companion one that's available for parents and caregivers as well. So that's what we're doing to try to bring it home to students to make sure that students are being supported and it's coming from all directions.
Thank you. You have a follow-up? No? Good, thank you. Up next is Trustee Powell. You're the floor.
Thank you through your Chair. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues are saying too about the need and gratitude for your team and what you're doing. I just wondered, how can we support you at the table? Like, is there something that either specific or ongoing? How do we get the word out? How do we, what can we do to support this?
Trustee Paul, I can see a big dollar sign there.
Well, advocating or, you know, sharing, I don't know. I just wondered if there's anything specific or tangible that you.
Yeah. Through you, Chair. The last question, I was looking across the room and now I'm looking right over here. We, yesterday, just off the heels of our presentation around how we are funded for mental health support. So of course, we would love to increase our team. We want to make sure that there's always availability and support. Some of the things that we're doing is just even highlighting it here in this space, giving it voice. And so that when you are fielding questions or receiving questions, you can speak to some of the resources, some of the initiatives, the summer programming. Again, we did not plant that question, but we're so glad it came up so that we can continue to de-stigma, you know, not have a stigma towards conversations that surround mental health. And I know that we do work alongside the other departments in our board. Careers has a component of mental health, so we're always cross-collaborating. Part of our grade seven and eight curriculum now includes mental health. So we're always, you know, very fortunate when we can have the opportunity to build capacity within the system, which of course costs money, but you know, the free stuff is really just the support that we get around this table and the encouragement to continue to do this work is really helpful.
Thank you. I see no other trustees hand up there. So Trustee Yebou, your hand is up once again? No. Okay, so Superintendent Jack Caldera, I want to thank you and your team for the wonderful work that you do with the mental health strategy. You have a very small team and supporting 37,000 students across the system. So your work is very critical. We really appreciate it and thank you so much for the work that you do. Thanks. Our next order of business is delegations. 5.1 declined delegations. There were three declined, three delegations that were declined for this evening's meeting. Trustees were informed about this declined delegations and that's in accordance with policy I-06, delegation to the board. We now move on to our next order of business is consent agenda items. Item number six, 6.1 action items comprised of 6.1.1 and 6.1.2, which is made up of 6.1.2.1, 6.1.2.2 and 6.1.2.3. We also have noted items. We shall not be talking about noted items. We shall not be discussing that. But there will be a single motion to approve the action items that I just said 6.1. I will now read the motion. Result of the Halton Catholic Baptist School Board approve consent agenda items 6.1.1, 6.1.2.1, 6.1.2.2 and 6.1.2.3 as submitted at the June 17, 2025 regular board meeting. May I have a mover, please? Trustee Ohan Chanada moves. Looking for a second there. Trustee Agnew seconds it. I shall now take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanada.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
Favor.
Trustee Vice Chair Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee Yebou.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension, consent agenda carries. We shall now move over to action items. Item number nine, which is our next order of business. 9.1 Rosary Apostolate in Schools Program. I will speak to this item, so I will pass the gavel to Trustee Ohan Chanada.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Dwork. Thank you. Okay, so this item was shared at the May 20, 2025 regular board meeting as a notice of motion and is now an action item. Chair Dwork, can you please read the motion?
Thank you, Chair. Whereas the Rosary Apostolate in Schools Program was prevalent at several HCDSP schools across the region prior to 2018, whereas the Rosary Apostolate in Schools Program in the past was a collaboration by the HCDSP with the Diocese of Hamilton, parish communities and community volunteers supporting and fostering home-school parish relationships, whereas the Rosary Apostolate in Schools Program seeks to evangelize and form elementary and secondary school children, youth through prayer and encourage families to pray the rosary together in honor of Our Lady of Cape, Queen of Canada. It resolved that the Director of Education bring a report to the Board of Trustees at a regular board meeting on June 17, 2025, providing background information on the Rosary Apostolate in Schools Program or other similar programs being run in HCDSP schools. We'd further resolve that a plan be presented in this report to restart or enhance these programs at the HCDSP in collaboration with the Diocese of Hamilton and parishes in all communities across the region to support this valuable home-school parish initiatives along with the timeline.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork.
Sorry, Madam Chair, just a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
It has June 17, 2025. Okay.
So I was just going to suggest, thank you, Trustee Agnew. That Chair Dwork changed that date of June 17, 2025 in the motion. It be changed?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Trustee Agnew. So that date was put in error there, so I would like to make two small adjustments to this before its table. One is the date of 21st, October 21, 2025, the second board meeting of the year. And the second one, I'd like to strike the word apostolate in the be it resolved item. So I would strike the word apostolate and put rosary program. Apostolate in the schools in the be it resolved, strike out the apostolate in the schools and leave rosary program.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. So we'll let them catch up. Just in the be it resolved portion of your motion?
Right.
Okay, so we move through the whereas, 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 then be it resolved.
Remove the apostolate in schools.
Yeah, so change the date.
Change the date.
To October 21, correct? To October 21, correct? Yeah.
And.
Hang on. We'll let them catch up with us. Yep. And then from my understanding, keep rosary and then remove apostolate in the school?
Yes.
And leave program.
Leave program.
Okay. So let's, I'll reread, excuse me, I'll reread be resolved. Trustee Dwork, let us know if this is your intention here. Be resolved that the Director of Education bring a report to the Board of Trustees at the regular board meeting on October 21, 2025, providing background information on the rosary program as it was backslash is at HCSB and/or other similar programs currently being run in the HCSB schools. Does that be its resolve, trustee Dwork?
Correct.
Okay, do we have an appetite to make this a friendly amendment?
It's not moved.
It hasn't been moved yet, so we don't have to do that. That's what I just wanted to say. No, I wasn't. That's a total lie. Okay. May I please have, this is an item moved by Chair Dwork and is now in order, and I shall place it on the table. I'm looking for a seconder for this item. Carabella. Trustee Carabella. Okay, Chair Dwork, you have five minutes to speak to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for placing this item on table. And thank you, trustee Carabella, for seconding this motion. Before I proceed, I would like to explain why I decided to bring this motion forward. You may be aware that I've been deeply involved with youth and youth programs in Milton for over 15 years. And through friends and parent volunteers, I was made aware that we had this program, the Rosary Apostolate program was done in Milton schools in 2018. Last October, I happened to attend a parish in Mississauga where this program was being promoted. I was inspired to bring this discussion of the rosary program to the table. Our children, future, and what better gift could we give our children than the opportunity for our students to get closer and stronger to our faith? After prayer and discussion with our pastors, staff, and I need extra time, Madam Chair. After prayer and discussion with pastors, staff, and several deeply engaged parents in Milton, I decided to put forth this motion, which by no means is perfect, but we trustees can all work together to make it better. And I would appreciate your suggestions. On the onset, I must say, I pointed to the Rosary Apostolate programs in school, but in my, in my, in my viruses, but I'm no, by no means, I'm pitching that we should be talking about this specific program. But I'm looking at a variety of programs that we currently have in our schools. We have the religion and family life program. We have the social justice programs in extra programs. And I'm also looking at exploring new programs, which are all approved by our parishes and our bishop. Madam Chair, as you know, we have been attending CCSD and OCSD conferences in the province of Ontario and across Canada. And our board has a very good achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming track record. And our success is mainly due to collaboration between our homes, schools, and parishes. We are indeed distinctly Catholic. We do provide a lot of opportunities to our students to get closer to our Catholic faith. I would now like to talk a little bit about the first part of my motion. I'm aware of a rosary program run by volunteers in schools in Oakville and done through a parish. I want to thank the volunteers who are selfless for doing this. Bringing the rosary to our students in our Catholic schools helps our students to learn more about our Mother Mary, and is an opportunity for us to evangelize through our students and families, and they can stay rooted in our faith. Through the rosary and prayer, we are now sowing the seeds for eternity. Praying the rosary in a classroom environment would be perfect and enable students to support one another in prayer and make a prayerful and joyful and have a prayerful and joyful experience. I'm sure we do have similar volunteer programs, curricular and non-curricular in our schools, in various elementary and secondary schools, in collaboration, in collaboration with our parishes and dioceses. I would like to see the Director bring a report providing background information on any rosary programs or other similar programs being run in our HCSB schools. I do understand it will take some time to collect data, hence I changed the date to October 21 board meeting. The report could also provide background information on the religion, religion and family life program currently being implemented in HCSB schools, for an example, as well as information on additional opportunities that students have for faith formation and social justice. I believe that this report will give us all a good sense of where we are as a system and whether there are opportunities to help our students get closer to our faith. I would now like to talk about the second part of my motion, which is pretty self-explanatory. I will preface by saying that we are now moving into an operational area, and I will tread very carefully. However, our multi-year strategic plan says that we must, the multi-year strategic plan is right behind me, says that we must celebrate our Catholic faith and aspire to be models of Christ. Thus, for the MYSP to be satisfied, all learners shall experience a Catholic learning environment rooted in gospel values and the Ontario Catholic School graduate expectations. Our schools shall foster the relationship between home and parish. Staff and students are discerning believers formed in a Catholic faith community who model Christ in their actions. The intention here is to see a plan to be presented in this report to enhance some of these wonderful programs at the HCSB in collaboration, of course, with the diocese and our parishes in all the communities across the region. The report should have a timeline for implementation. I have a very strong sense that we have parents and volunteers who would like to help and support a rosary program offered through our parishes, and would like to see the possibility of it being offered across all our schools. We all know that religion, religion resources are not funded by the ministry, and that the cost to our board for implementing the above should be minimal, at $0. Of course, there should be some cost, but yes. I will encourage trustees to provide your inputs to make this motion better, if at all we want to, and easily, and be easily supported. We'd like staff to implement it wholeheartedly so that we can proudly say that we have left a faith-filled legacy at the Halton Catholic District School Board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. And I did give you a few extra seconds. Okay, so we're going to go, we're going to follow bylaw 10.4, which says the mover of a main motion under consideration shall have the option of opening and closing the debate. The mover may only open debate for a time limit of five minutes and close debate for a period of up to three. All other members may only speak once to the motion for a period of three minutes. No member shall speak longer than three minutes to a motion without leave of the Chair. This does not prohibit a member from raising a point of privilege or a point of order. Then we're going to move into debate. In addition to the above time limits for debate, each member other than the mover will be allowed up to three minutes to ask questions through the Chair, who will then direct the question as appropriate. This time limit does not include time for the response to the question. If the question is directed through the Chair to the mover of the motion, the mover may choose to respond at the time when they close debate or not to respond at all. Okay, so I will now open the floor for question time. Each trustee does have three minutes for questions only. Trustees, do we have any questions? I see trustee Saunders, you have your hand up.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, in the parishes where this already exists, we're not going to replace that. We're just going to work with what's there now, is that right?
Thank you, trustee Saunders.
Madam Chair, yes, trustee Saunders. Everything and all that I'm talking about is always in collaboration with our parishes and our bishops.
Thank you. Trustee Powell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Has there been, I don't want to say this, has there been, is there an appetite for this? Is there a space for this? Do we, is there a need for this in the school to bring the program back in addition to our regular religion program?
Thank you, trustee Powell. Mary, maybe clarification of what the motion is saying as far as the report. Trustee Dwork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not asking to bring a program that existed in the past, like I was very clear about it. This is a program, a rosary program, which has worked with the schools and the parishes in the local communities. This is, I'm not trying to pitch an old program, which was there. And this is something which is new. It is existing in some schools. This motion just tries to have a timeline or put forth something which we can use to enhance and grow the program. And to your next question about teaching, adding to the teaching time, yes, it's going to take a few minutes. And we're doing a lot of extracurricular work or curricular work. It is going to be something extra. But yes, we are teaching our faith. And I'm not sure we can classify that as, as being a problem. I think it's great to learn about our faith.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Trustee Powell, you do have a minute, 38 seconds to go.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up through you, Madam Chair, just to trustee Dwork. Is this, would it be something, do you imagine it to go in hand with the current curriculum or over and above?
Thank you, trustee Powell. Trustee Dwork?
So we have the curriculum. I'd rather leave this to Superintendent Crowell, Madam Chair, because Superintendent Crowell is of the curriculum. But I'm aware that we have this program running hand in glove with the principals of local schools in the parishes and with the permission of Bishop, of course. And this is something extra Superintendent Crowell, if you'd like to help me out. Thank you.
Sure, certainly. And through you, Madam Chair. With regards to rosary programs per se, I guess what I would say is that the teachings of the rosary are included in the religion and family life curriculum. So when we've talked to the bishop in the past about this, he's been pretty clear that the approved curriculum that comes from the Assembly of Catholic Bishops of Ontario includes the teaching of the rosary. Schools could certainly choose to do an extracurricular or a lunchtime rosary club or group. They could choose to, as part of the sacramental preparation, they may have students prepare, make homemade rosaries and learn about the, learn about the importance of the rosary, learn about the specific deeds and how they're sort of structured. But it wouldn't be something that would be needed to be added to our religion and family life program, if that makes sense. Bishop Crossy has been very clear that it already exists within the religion and family life program. So in terms of rosary programs per se, it would be something that would be an extracurricular or something that would be added, but not a, not a curricular requirement that we would be adjusting the religion and family life program, if that makes sense. I hope I answered the question.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. I'll be moving on now. So trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just clarifying that this is going to be about elementary schools and secondary schools. Can you clarify that? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Dwork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've ordered the motion very broad. And again, I'm going to leave it to Director Klein, if the motion passes, Director Klein to bring reports. We are doing well in schools, in secondary schools in certain areas. We have the development and peace and some other initiatives, other programs. I'd like to hear about that, how well they're doing, how we can grow that. So again, it's operational. From the time trustees pass it, it'll be in the hand of Director Klein to bring it back and stuff to Director Klein.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Trustee Carabella, you do have some time left, if you have another question?
Thank you. Just in terms of implementation, it's more going to be something consistent, maybe once a month, that sort of you're looking for?
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Is that your understanding of program, that it's thought as sort of one and done, but it's more consistent? Thank you.
Again, again, it's, again, I would say it's operational, totally operational. I would leave it to the discussion with the Superintendent Principals and parishes. This is the collaboration we already have in place. And so they can have the conversations and decide whether they need it weekly, monthly. That's, that's a lot to talk to them.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Trustee Carabella?
No, thank you. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So just, I think, just some clarification on that. So the intention behind this motion, I just want to make sure it's understood, is for the Director to kind of go away, speak with staff, come back with what is currently in existence in our schools. What are we currently doing that is either direct or adjacent to rosary programs? So just like a fact finding, so that we're very clear on what we currently have, what's, because it's kind of different. And then you mentioned it's operational. So then beyond that, is it just for staff then to say, this is what we're doing? These are some ways in which we think we can enhance the program? Or here's some ideas of things that, like, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the motion is trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Dwork, a summary, I think.
Madam Chair, I think trustee Agnew is absolutely correct. So, so we have, we have something which you'd like to know. I know Director Klein, in his board meeting reports, and also to trustees' weekly reports, presents the good that we're doing in our system. We are doing a lot of really good stuff in our system, but they're all in, in different bits and pieces and silos. I'd like to bring together a report saying that we have, we're doing all these wonderful things in our system. And so here's where we can grow and here's where we can do. So you're correct.
Specific, specific to the rosary program?
Not only that, I would say any other program. We have, we have a human, social justice program. So we are doing the program. We have it in different high schools and Director Klein could probably, Superintendent Crowell could talk more about it. How can we grow that? What are we doing? Do we need to grow it or do we not? My motion is also wanting to grow the rosary program.
Can you see the motion back on the screen?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's captured.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. We'll put that up on the screen so you can get a confirmation of understanding. Trustee Agnew, you do have a few more, a little more, more time.
Yeah, so that's helpful. This just, I mean, this is very directed, which is fine. I'm not saying I oppose. But this is very specific to that program. So when trustee Dwork was mentioning some of these other pieces that may be adjacent to, I just want to make sure that if staff is going to go back and do this, that what they're coming back with is something that we're looking to see, so that we don't waste their time, and sort of what the goal of the report is and what, like, I hate for them to come back and then for us to say, oh, by the way, can you go back and grab information on social justice? Can you, so like, what is the specific ask? And this just seems to be very much about the rosary. So just wanted to clarify.
The rosary program is for sure the focus, correct, but also and other similar programs.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, we do now move to the portion that's entitled debate time. If anyone wants to debate the topic or the motion, each trustee will have three minutes for debate only. I do not see any hands up for debate. I do, oh, trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this also a moment to make a comment, right? Like to debate it, to give support to this request for a report?
Correct. This doesn't include time for the response to the questions. Like, you can use a comment for the debate time, correct?
Okay. So I just wanted to say that I support this request for a report in all schools, elementary and secondary. I think it would be very helpful for us to see how children are being led to pray the rosary. Very often in May, we see a dedicated effort, October and May, a dedicated effort to bring Our Lady and the rosary to life, which is wonderful. And what I really hope that this report shows, that there are programs that, that run through like October to May, in a steady practice of guiding children throughout the year and then culminating in May, the month of Our Lady. I do remember the other program that was running that we referred to. It was very vibrant, a lot of happy students, staff, volunteers, that really like brought in a lot of parent volunteers into the school as well. So I saw it very positive. In Oakville, there is one parish rosary ministry that's happening where the, the family of schools belonging to the parish has a dynamic woman who leads this ministry of bringing volunteers into the school, very collaboratively with the priest of the parish. So it's a, it's, I hope that this report brings out that model that they started to fill in that gap, that to bring the rosary to the students. Yeah, so I, you know, it's leadership opportunities for parishioners, parents, volunteers. It does, I can really see it tying the parish-school-family relationships. And it furthers the mission of faith formation and the practice of prayer. So it's going to be good to know what we're currently doing, what can be done. It can reveal opportunities for future growth of this valuable spiritual experience of praying the rosary throughout the school year.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Seeing no one else with their hand up, Chair Dwork, you have three minutes to close the discussion on your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll save some time there. I want to thank trustees for a great, good questions. I'm sure we have, we will have great success in collaborating with our parishes to bring, bring programs such as the rosary program to our school, and we will have no shortage of volunteers. Trustees, I'm hoping that you will support this motion requesting a report with plans to enhance and add some wonderful faith-based program, like the religion and family life programs, as well as the social justice programs at HCSB in collaboration with the Diocese of Hamilton and parishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Dwork. At this time, we will now call the vote. We'll be doing a recorded vote on this. Trustee Carabella.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Powell?
Hi, I'm in favor.
Jesse Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Kelly. Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Vice Chair Murphy.
In favor.
Chair Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Trustee Filbert.
Favor.
Trustee McGuire. Trustee McGuire. Trustee Yaboa.
In favor.
I am also in favor, unanimous. The motion is carried. It will move forward. Thank you. I will now give the gavel back.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Your phone back. There you go.
Thank you, trustees. We shall now move on to item 9.2, Halton Hills Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review, School Boundary Review Committee Recommendations. This item was shared. The last board meeting is a staff report. It's now an action item. Superintendent Merrick, please speak to this item. I will read the motion and then place it on the table. We will then take questions from trustees on this motion. Superintendent Merrick, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, staff, for bringing forward the recommendation of the School Boundary Review Committee for the future boundaries in Halton Hills. Again, as you mentioned, Chair, there's no changes from the staff report presented back in May. We did receive one piece of correspondence on this, and it's part of the trustee package tonight. We, again, would like to thank the members of the SBRC. They gave up a lot of their time. We had several meetings on this boundary review, so a lot of time to be a part of this process and reach this recommendation. And we'd also like to thank the members of the community for their feedback. We literally received hundreds of responses on this one, and their feedback was great to bring forward to the committee and use as part of their considerations as, as coming forward with the recommendation. So we have one rather lengthy resolution for consideration tonight, and that gives all the details of the proposed changes to the boundaries at Halton Hills.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I will now read the motion. Can we have the motion up, please? Okay, it's a lengthy motion, so please bear it in mind. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board directs staff to implement the School Boundary Review Committee, recommended regular track boundaries for the 2026-27 school year, whereby these changes have the effect of altering existing boundaries by, number one, the current Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School regular track boundary transfers in its entirety to Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School. Number two, the Northwest Rural Zone transfers from St. Francis of Assisi Catholic Elementary School to Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School. Number three, Zone V79 transfers from St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School to Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School. Number four, Zone V69 transfers, transfer from St. Cath, Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School to St. Bridget Catholic Elementary School. And number five, the entirety of the Limehouse Community attending Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School. Resolve that the optional French immersion program in Halton Hills be transferred from St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School and St. Bridget Catholic Elementary School to Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School, starting in the 2028-2029 school year, with grades one to seven and grades eight added in the following school year. Resolve that grade eight regular track students in the 2026-27 school year, who reside in the following areas, are given the option for legacy exceptions until graduation, and the transportation be provided based on the board's transportation policy. One, the Northwest Rural Zone has the option for legacy exceptions at St. Francis of Assisi Catholic Elementary School. And two, Zones V79 and V69 have the option for legacy exceptions at St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School. Resolve that the following legacy exceptions be provided for the optional French immersion program until graduation, and the transportation be provided based on the board's transportation policy. One, that the current grade four to eight cohorts in the optional French immersion program at either St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School or St. Bridget Catholic Elementary School will remain under the current program accommodation plan until graduation. Two, the current grade three cohort in the optional French immersion program at St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School will remain at the school up to grade six, then transfer to Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School for grade seven and eight. Resolve that the extended French program in the town of Halton Hills be relocated to Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School, starting in 2028-29 school year. You. May I have a mover for this item? Trustee Ohan Chanata moves. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Agnew seconds. So the motion is on the table. I will open up question times. Trustees, please, please raise your hand. And Superintendent Merrick and the staff is here. They will respond to this. Up first, trustee Saunders, is your hand up for this motion? Okay, trustee Saunders, you're on the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. To Superintendent Merrick, I know that there were some, some concerns and some of the controversy in this, and particularly around the French program. I wonder if you could sort of outline some of the concerns.
Sorry, point of order, Chair. I, I, controversy? Can I have that defined?
Trustee Ohan Chanata, trustee Saunders, just give me a minute. I have to start a timer.
Sure.
Here. So trustee Ohan Chanata. Can you raise the point of order? Can you specify?
Just the inference of controversy. I'd like that defined.
I don't think that's a point of order.
Controversy over the boundary view. I'm not aware of any controversy.
So that's trustee Ohan Chanata. It does not break any, any bylaw, or, so we can ask the question for clarification. So we'll get to that point.
Let's do that.
Okay. So trustee Saunders, please proceed with your question.
Sure. I, I know that there was some concerns concerning this process. I wonder if Superintendent Merrick sort of outlined what some of the concerns were and what we're doing to alleviate them.
Okay, before we go to Superintendent Merrick, there was a question raised about, a comment you made about controversy. You would mind clarifying what you said?
Yeah, I would draw that word.
Or, sorry?
I will draw that word.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Merrick, the floor is yours.
Yeah, there was lots of discussion back and forth about impacts to the regular track programs, impacts of the French immersion programs. The committee heard all of those responses from, we had over 300 responses to our community feedback surveys. They took that into consideration and had various revisions to the options. I mean, trustee Ohan Chanata was there at all the meetings. We probably had close to, by the end of it, I don't know, approaching 25, 30 different options that we considered. We tried to tweak different things to make that more, I guess, more, take into consideration some of the concerns from that, from that community. So there's lots of different options that we considered. Ultimately, it's, you know, any boundary review ends up with some people being affected and other, others not being affected. And that's, I mean, it's really trying to find a balance between those two things, and, and trying to find the best solution for everyone that's sustainable for a long period of time. But yeah, there, there will be, you know, challenges with any boundary. Nobody likes change, and it is, this is a challenge.
Thank you, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, sorry. Just specifically, what were the, the concerns that French parents had?
Superintendent Merrick, would you like to answer?
I, I mean, you, you could ask them as well. I mean, like, there, there was lots of feedback. The feedback was provided in your, in your report as well. So you can, you can read through those results there. There's links to all of it on there. Some of the concerns were that they're going to be in a school that's going to be French immersion only. So some people like that, others don't like that. So it, it is the first in our board that would have that. We have our first kind of French immersion-only school. But our co-terminals board also has that model as well. We've actually had requests to have that model in other municipalities. So Oakville actually requested that in, in past boundary reviews, and, and we, it wasn't the recommendation that came forward, but the committee did consider that, and this is the recommendation they brought forward.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Go ahead. This is question time, by the way. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Up next, we have trustee Carabella. You're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that my question was answered. I, I was making sure I understood it correctly, that this will be just a French immersion school. Okay. But at a certain point, there's still going to be a bit of grandfathering legacy, is that right? And then, when does it become a fully just French immersion track?
Superintendent Merrick?
Dylan will help you out here. Probably messes, messes up. I believe it's September 2028, this one.
So, like, three years.
I'll let, I'll let Dylan answer. He's, he's the master on this stuff.
Great. Thank you for that question. So French immersion, the first year, it'll be grade one to seven, 2028, 2029. And then the following year, we would add grade eight. The existing students in grade four to eight, I believe, right now, at either St. Catherine or St. Bridget, they would remain on the current plan. So they would start off in St. Catherine, and then go to St. Bridget in grade six, and then continue there until grade eight. Those students would be impacted by this.
Thank you.
This is an extremely complicated boundary review. You can imagine with all the different programs, five elementary schools involved, very complicated. And that's why we had so many meetings with, with this group. But yeah, there's lots of considerations, lots of moving parts with it. And I think that the group did a great job kind of weeding through those and finding solutions for a lot of different concerns that were raised.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Yes, thank you. I think I could really see that even just by the motion with all the moving parts in it. So that was my next question, too, was, well, do you see this, like, staying for many years like this? Because so much movement has, is this very settled now for many years to come? Or do you foresee some future need for another boundary review? Thank you.
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, thank, thank you. That, that is one of the considerations that we're minimizing changes in the future of the, like, one of our mandates with the committee. Our hope is that, that's the case. And the last one, trustee Ohan Chanata, you are a parent rep on the, our last one that we have was back in 2016 in Georgetown. So made it from 2016 all the way to 2025, 2024, 2025. So we do know that there is more growth planned for Georgetown in the, in the southwest kind of quadrant of Georgetown. So we have two, hopefully, two new schools coming there at some point. So there will be more change. We're hopeful about that. You know, we've kind of designed it to be that those new schools that we have in that area will contain all the residents from that area. But if things change, there could be, there could be more changes. But definitely had an eye towards minimizing changes in the future with this boundary review suggestion or recommendation.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, any further questions?
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanata, question time. Your questions?
Thank you.
Question time.
Yes, thank you, Chair Dwork. I have a question for Superintendent Merrick. Just to validate that the voice of our parents in Georgetown and Halton Hills, they were kind of equally distributed between our French immersion parents and our regular track parents. I believe that to be true, but could you validate that?
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We, we did get a number of responses from both groups. I mean, in the end, the, the recommended option had close to 70% of people voting in favor of it. It was more favorable amongst the English track than the French track, but even the French track was, was about 50/50 in the French track. So, and, you know, all of their votes count equally. That's where, again, we're trying, the committee is trying to, you know, appease the most number of residents in the community, and trying to find a balance amongst the, the English track and the French track, and find a solution that's acceptable for all.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick.
Go ahead. Thank you. With that, I see no other hands up for question time. I shall now open up debate. If trustees want to debate or ask, or comment, do trustees have any who'd like to debate? No, saying none? I just have, sorry. Go ahead. Oh, your hand is again. Trustee Ohan Chanata.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Dwork. I just really want to say and go on record, am I a little sensitive to this, trustee Saunders? Yeah, a little bit. Because I've seen the meetings and multiple meetings, and, and because I've been through boundary reviews before, it's tough, right? Not everyone gets what they want. Not every parent gets what they want, and every parent wants the best for their child. I get that. I totally get that. But I think from this boundary review, really, the regular track, they were the least disrupted, and that's the majority of our students in that particular area. So I think it's a win moving forward, and it is complicated. I've ever seen that before, to kind of keep track of all the different, on the different pieces moving. But I really want to thank, I do have to thank Superintendent Merrick and his team. They did an amazing job, and they really did listen. They really listened to the voice of our parents. And some of the parents always, they're, they're amazing. They'll come up with other ideas that nobody's ever thought of. And, and they really said, hey, we're open to that. We'll take a look at that and change it a few times. So, so well done. Well done to my parents, if they're listening out there, our committee, because it was hard work. And yeah, I'm a little sensitive when it comes to boundary reviews, because I know some people are disappointed by them, but the, the greater of the good is being served here. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanata. I just have a comment before I call the vote. First of all, I would like to profusely thank each and every member of the Boundary Review Committee for being there. They said time, they took time away from their families to be at those meetings, and multiple, multiple meetings. I happen to be at one of those meetings. I really appreciate the work that they do. Thanks to trustee Ohan Chanata for you being there at those meetings. It's been a challenging, a few meetings, good, strong discussions. Thank you to Superintendent Merrick and your team, Dranko and Dylan. Thank you so much for, for all the work that you put forth, bringing those numbers back and forth, crunching numbers and all that stuff. Really appreciate all that part of it. So we really do appreciate the work done. So with that, I shall call the vote on the motion. Can we have the motion once again? No. So this motion was moved by trustee Ohan Chanata, seconded by trustee Agnew. And with that, I shall call the vote on the motion in front of us. Trustee Ohan Chanata, give it to you first.
In favor?
Trustee Kelly.
Favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Can you come back, say?
Yes. Trustee Vice Chair Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire. Sorry, trustee Yaboa.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Obstand.
We have seven in favor, one abstention, none opposed. Motion carries. Shall now move on to our next action item, 9.3, 2024-25 Year End Audit Planning Report from the external, external auditors. This item was shared at a last board meeting as a staff report. It's now an action item. Superintendent Loffs, please speak to this item, and then I will read the motion and place it on the table. Superintendent Loffs?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Attached to Deloitte Year End Audit Plan for 2425, Stephen Stewart, our audit partner from Deloitte, presented this to the audit committee at the June 11th meeting, where it was unanimously approved. Mr. Chair, over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Can you hear the motion up, please? I shall read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the External Auditors 2025 Audit Service Plan Report. May I ask for a mover, please?
I can move it. It's Powell.
Powell moves. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Agnew seconds it. So I shall now open up question time. Trustees, do you have questions for Superintendent Loffs and his team? Please raise your hand. No, no hands up. Shall now open up debate time. Trustees, do you would like to debate about this motion? Seeing none, I shall now call the vote on the motion in front of us. It was moved by trustee Powell, seconded by trustee Agnew. So we are voting on item 9.3, 2024-25 Year End Audit Planning Report from the External Auditors. I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote?
Conflict of interest.
Oh, sorry, conflict. Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trust, Vice Chair Murphy.
In favor.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Favor? Okay, thank you. Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Favor?
Favor.
Okay. Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata.
In favor.
We have seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. We shall now move on to our next order of business, Staff Report, 10.1, 2025-26 Budget Estimates. I know this is going to be a long presentation. Trustees, do we want to stop for a five-minute break? Okay, let's take a five-minute break and be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As well as seeing some costs on the construction side that could potentially be impacted by tariffs. Similar to in years past, special education needs continue to outpace and mental health continue to outpace the funding that we're receiving in those areas. And while the benefit percentage didn't change for 25-26, which we usually see it decrease when salaries increase, there still is a gap in funding for statutory benefits compared to the benchmarks that we receive. And then, as always, legal claims that are not subject to statutory limitations can pose problems for boards. And then inflation, so inflation has been typically outpacing the increase that we've received in years past for supplies and materials. So when we look at our enrollment, so we are seeing an increase in enrollment of approximately 285 ADE for 25-26, which is really positive news. And this is the first year in a few years that we're actually projecting to see an increase in JK enrollment. So obviously, if we can get the students in in kindergarten, then we get to see them through the full 10 years of elementary school. So it's really pertinent for us to continue to recruit and attract new students to our board at a young age. On the secondary panel, we've really seen an increase in enrollment in our secondary schools, which is great, which helps to have a positive increase overall in our enrollment of the 285. So we're down in elementary about 304, but we're up in secondary about 589. So you can kind of see in this graph, so kindergarten, we're projecting to be up 35 ADE. But then, as those lower enrollments that we've seen in the last five years are rolling through our grades, there's a dip in grades one to three and four to eight, and then back, there's the increase in secondary. So looking at our revenue, so our core ed funding has increased 17.9 million from our 24-25 revised estimates. This is largely due to funding increases as part of the centrally negotiated collective agreements. So we saw the benchmarks related to staffing increase across all the areas in core education funding. And we also saw census data updates. So we spoke to this briefly at the last meeting, but prior to this year, the ministry was using census data from 2006, which wasn't favorable for our board. Now they're rolling in over the next five years, the 2021 census data, and we're starting to see that have a positive impact for our board, specifically in the special education component of the core ed funding. We also saw an increase in student transportation funding this year, which was well-needed as we were operating deficits in transportation for the last few years. There is a decrease of about 2.4 million in our responsive education programs. So a large chunk of this is just the final component of Bill 124 retros that sort of ends as part of the 24-25 school year. So that was about 2.2 million of that 2.4 million decrease. And then we also saw some smaller decreases in de-streaming supports, professional development for ECEs, math AQ, and decreasing in removing barriers for students with disabilities. So some smaller responsive education programs that we received funding for last year were not announced as part of the announcement back at the end of May. In terms of our federal program, so this is the first year of our new agreement with the federal government for our LINK, so our immigration program. So they did tweak some of the metrics for us. So we saw a slight decrease in that program as a result of that process. Our interest revenue, so we're being a bit more conservative with our interest due to lower cash flows as a result of the capital projects, like the three major schools coming to completion, as well as projected lower interest rates for the upcoming year. The recoverable wages, the increase is relatively small, and that's just due to the increase in costs of the employees that we seconded to various organizations. We saw a slight reduction in our turf rentals for the upcoming year. So that's why our community use of schools has decreased 41,000. Our international students, so we're projecting lower enrollment of international students of about 43 ADE, so our average daily enrollment. So we're going from 267 in 24-25 to 224 for 25-26. Our childcare and before and after care revenue is increasing due to an increase in rates for the upcoming year. You can see that our education development charges, we have a significant decrease here. Again, this doesn't impact compliance with the ministry. Education development charges are kept out of that process. Last year, so in 23-24, we saw a significant increase in education development charges. And as a result, we budgeted accordingly for 24-25. We're starting to see that sort of taper off in 24-25. So we're forecasting that trend to continue for 25-26. But the money we collect here just goes down towards paying down our debt on the land that we had to purchase to build our new schools on. School generated funds, we kept relatively flat. And then there's a $1.8 million increase in deferred capital contributions. So again, this is the board recognizing revenue that corresponds with the amortization associated with major capital projects that the province funds. We talked about this the other night, but this is just a breakdown of the core ed funding. So in total, we saw 20.6 million increase or 4.55% increase in our core ed funding over the 24-25 revised estimates. The main drivers of that, again, are the increased enrollment, increased benchmarks to support the centrally bargained labor numbers, and increased funding in transportation and temp accommodation. So we did, the ministry almost doubled. So they went from 40 million to 70 million in the pool of money related to temporary accommodations. This is something that we've spoken to the board the last few years about how they haven't increased that pot of money for a number of years. So this was positive news for us because we're heavy users of temporary accommodation. So it's a welcomed increase in terms of the funding for that. Some of the other elements that the ministry provides funding for are capital grants. So we're projecting 26 million in capital funding for the upcoming year and as well as the school renewal of 4.9, and then the temporary accommodation where we see the significant increase over last year of 400,000. So that temporary accommodation number had been declining for a number of years. So it's nice to see it increase. And then minor tangible capital assets. So just as a reminder to the board, we're allowed to spend up to 2.5% of our operating funds that we receive from the ministry for small capital items. So obviously, not the building elements, but things like computers, furniture, those types of items. So we're protecting, we're receiving an increase in funding as our operating revenue has increased overall. So this is a list of the responsive education programs that were announced for the upcoming year. They are a continuation of programs that we received funding for in 24-25. Some of them you might not have seen as part of our presentations for at estimates last year or revised estimates as they were announced offstream, so subsequent to those reporting deadlines. The only semi-significant increase is just in terms of the reading education staff to support reading interventions rep. So that has been adjusted to accommodate for the grid increases for teachers. So we'll look at our expenses for 24-25 now. In terms of classroom teachers, so we're projecting an increase of almost $8.5 million. This is largely due to an increase in grid rates and grid movement for our teachers, as well as an increase in the number of teachers due to our projected increase in enrollment. So we are adding seven special education teachers and an additional 24 teachers. That's the net change between our elementary and our secondary panel as a result of the increased enrollment. In terms of our occasional teachers, so the costs continue to increase for our occasional teachers. The two main drivers of this for 25-26 are an increase in our educational assistance supply costs and the increase in the rate associated with occasional teachers. So as the grid rates for our regular teachers increase, so did the grid for our occasional teachers. When we look at our educational assistance, it's an increase of 1.3 million, and that is largely due to the dollar per hour increase in their collective agreement, as well as there were vacancies in 24-25 at revised estimates that we prorated the salaries for to present a more accurate budget. So we've returned those vacancies to 1.0 FTE for the 25-26 budget. When we look at our early childhood educators, so these are the employees that work with our kindergarten teachers. Again, they saw a grade rate increase of a dollar an hour. We also increased their benefits accordingly. And then one of the items that's reducing this line item is we reallocated some of our WSIB costs. So primarily, we had been allocating the majority of it between educational assistants and teachers. We refined that for 25-26 to also kind of better reflect where we're seeing our actual WSIB charges across ECEs, as well as secretarial staff and custodial staff. So there'll be some changes throughout those areas as well. When we look at our textbooks and supplies, so there's a $1.7 million decrease in this area. That's largely due to a significant increase in religious textbooks that was proposed in the 24-25 budget that was a one-time purchase. So there was no need to continue that funding for 25-26, as well as an adjustment related to our indigenous education funding. And then with our minor tangible capital assets, we had a reduction in some of the purchases that come through this area. There was also a reduction of about 200,000 related to professional assessments, which you'll see in our professional pair of professionals. So we had vacancies in our psychologists for 24-25. And as a result, we allocated funds for third-party assessments. We're projecting to be able to recruit those vacancies for 25-26. So those costs were moved back from professional assessments to our psychologists and professional and paraprofessional line. Our computers saw an increase of 500,000, and that's directly related to our specialized equipment allocation. So we dedicated more funding for computer purchases and equipment purchases, as well as the training for students to go along with this equipment. When we look at our paraprofessional, professional, and technical, so there was an increase in the grid rates for our computer techs, our CYCs, our social workers, and our chaplains, as well as the increase of 2.5 psychologists that were vacant during our 24-25 revised estimates. We did add back funding for commissioners to the schools, as well as an increase in software costs. When we look at our library and guidance, there's an increase of just over a million dollars, and this is largely due to an increase of five FTE related to guidance teachers, as well as grid rate increases and grid movement for guidance teachers. In terms of our staff development, so this is a decrease of just under 800,000. Again, this is partially due to a reduction in special education training, some supply costs for teachers. So when we are, this is the coverage for teachers that are released to do PD, as well as we saw some decrease in funding for some of those responsive education programs that we had professional development associated with in 24-25. So we reduced that professional development in areas of math, de-streaming, and some other small programs. In terms of our department heads, so there's a slight decrease. We spoke about this at year-end. So we used to allocate a portion of the department head release time to the department heads category from the teaching time. We put that back in the classroom teacher teaching time as that's where the actual costs for that component get tracked. So that's causing the slight decrease in department head cost there. In terms of our school administration, so this category is made up of the principals and vice principals, as well as the school secretarial staff. So there was a new grid rate for principals and vice principals that came out this fall, which resulted in an increase in our costs associated with principals and vice principals. And similarly, there was the dollar per hour increase for our secretarial staff, as well as the WSIB allocation that I kind of spoke to towards secretarial staff to make up the one, just over a million dollar increase in school administration. In terms of our coordinators and consultants, so we do have a placeholder in coordinators and consultants for the recruitment of some indigenous department staff. And one of the other things we did do was when we were looking through our staff development line, we did identify that consultant related to math was coded to staff development as opposed to coordinators and consultants. So we've adjusted that to properly reflect where the, what the person's role is. So that's now under coordinators and consultants for 25-26. And continuing education, there's a slight decrease due to a decrease in the childminding program as part of the LINK agreement with the federal government. So looking at our board admin, so again, the larger component of the increase here is related to non-union grids and grid movement, as well as an increase to full 1.0 FTEs for vacancies that we had in board admin positions throughout last year. So we had a vacancy in payroll, vacancy in HR. We did add one additional payroll advisor for the upcoming year due to the continuing pressures in that department. And as you can see, a large portion of our budget relates to salaries and benefits. So it's a pretty critical area of our board to ensure that we have the appropriate staff to be able to manage the high volume of activity that flows through that department on a weekly basis to make sure that all our employees are paid on time and correctly. We did increase our legal fees contingency for the current year by 200,000. And we saw a reallocation of our broadband monetization funding from board admin to school operations. So this, again, was the funding that we were getting for the vaping sensors, I believe, is what we were using it for in 24-25. It's a continuation of that program. So transportation did increase in expenses, similarly to the increase in revenue. So we saw it kind of across all our major areas of transportation. So we saw an increase in our forecasted elementary transportation, our secondary transportation, our special education transportation, and our French immersion transportation. We also saw an increase in our fuel costs that make up the change of 400,000 for transportation. In terms of school operations, so the 1.5 million dollar increase was made up of an increase in grid rates for our custodial staff, as well as grid rates for our non-union staff, an increase in our WSIB allocation for operations staff, and an increase in electrical costs. We did partially offset some of these increases by a reduction in some of our summer student costs. And then other people accommodation, so this is, this decrease is driven by a lower principal balance on our long-term debt. So as our balance decreases, so do our interest costs for the upcoming year. This was partially offset by an increase in portable moves and setup costs of 500,000. And our other expenses decreased slightly by having one less secondment projected for the 24-25 year. And then similarly to the increase in deferred capital contributions related to capital assets, our amortization is projected to increase in 25-26. So in terms of our board financial position, as you can see and as Aaron spoke to, we are projecting a balanced budget. So you can see that in the in-year change component of this slide. It was also reported in the report for the board package. So it was brought to our attention prior to the meeting that there is one kind of adjustment that we have to make to the opening balances of this slide. So there's no actual impact on our in-year surplus deficit. But what we will have to update is our capital reserve opening balance. So at revised estimates, we projected to use just over $15 million in past board-approved capital projects based on the status of where those projects are at. Going into 25-26, we reduced that number, but we failed to add that back to the opening number on this slide for the capital reserve. So it's sort of a net neutral impact. But right now, our capital reserve is short a couple million dollars on this report. But again, the in-year change is the piece that matters for this year's budget, and we are projecting a balanced budget for 25-26. The next slides kind of speak to those previously approved board capital projects. So this is the list of projects that has been approved in the past in the remaining useful life. So as you can see, some of these projects will remain on this list for up to 40 years. So long past, we're all working for this board. But it's just there to show that these are the projects that have improved by this board and past boards as we continue to improve our facilities. And then ministry compliance, so as we've kind of spoken to in the past, there are rules in the Education Act around being compliant. Not only are we compliant, we have a balanced budget. So we don't even have to go into the calculation of our acceptable compliant deficit because we're at zero in our projection for 25-26. That's the end of the presentation. Happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. I shall now open up the floor to trustees. But before that, Director Klein, would you like to add anything else?
No, I know we're calling out, it's a late evening, but I really only echo what Superintendent Law Office had said earlier. This is, in terms of a narrative, it's a good news story. And we could say that not all boards in the province will be able to have the confidence and the luxury of reporting about balanced budgets. I think many are facing tough, tough times in terms of the funding and in terms of the headwinds of maybe enrollment that's not quite what they want. And there's been a lot of work done in a very short period of time among, almost quoting Churchill here, a very small group of people who've done a ton of work to ensure that we have a cogent, successful budget that reflects the feedback that we've gotten from myriad people. Dr. Collmore talked to us a few weeks ago, or we shared the feedback that it was larger than past years and positive in the sense of productive type of comments that came from parents and came from community, came from staff, and came from others. And I think that's extremely good and I'm very proud of the work that this team has done and very grateful for the work that they've done because I do think it reflects the priorities in our MOSP. It reflects good stewardship, and we're very excited for the road ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Klein. With that, I shall open up the floor to trustees for questions. Trustee Saunders, you have the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. I noticed that our international students, we're going down 637,000, which is about 42 students. I'm just wondering what would you attribute that to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. A large part too, we've noticed that the estimates we had back at revised, some of the students did not, didn't actually, or if they did came, they've actually transferred out. So we had to readjust our projections for the upcoming year, and we were adjusting to be more conservative for the upcoming year. So what we initially had at revised, the numbers have dropped from that point in time to today.
Yeah, second question. I noticed that, so we got extra money for computers, and that seems to match the anticipated expense. I'm just wondering, the money that we reallocated from reserves to pay for computers and software, how is that represented here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders again. That money that we did for the 600,000 or sold back a few months ago, that one would, that would not be represented here. So we've already used that. That was for this current year, 24-25 only. So for next year, it's actually not reflected here. So the other thing too, just so you know, we didn't necessarily get more money for computers. Classroom computers for elementary and secondary has not changed. It's exactly the same per pupil amount that we've always received for the actual revenue for computers in the classroom and such. So, but I understand what you're saying, the 614, that was already used for the current year. So it wouldn't be reflected in this at all.
Thank you. I'll come back to you.
One more question?
I'll come back to you. Okay, go ahead. We don't have too many speakers, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. I noticed that our occasional teacher expense, we're anticipating $800,000 increase. Now, how does that reconcile with, I believe we had a plan last year to reduce sick days? Is this where this is coming through, or how does this integrate with this? I believe it was a million dollar reduction that we had planned. So just, if you could just speak to that, just let me know how this sort of reconciles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, some of the plan that we had last year couldn't come to fruition. So this is the cost, the expected cost of what it's going to be for, projecting for what potentially could be for sick leave in the upcoming year. Having said that, once we get to revise and we start doing a forecast out and extrapolate it out, we'll be able to adjust it up or down depending on what it is in December, or I guess by November when we do it.
We'll come back if you have more questions. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the reserves. So last year's audited statement, we had 42 million of reserves. I know we bought, it's probably St. Kateri stuff, but now we're starting with $39 million here of reserves. I don't recall seeing any notice of, like, why are the reserves down like 3 million, particularly capital, which went from 6 million to 2.6 million since, say, August?
Okay.
Do you want me to start here?
So thank you, trustee Kennedy, for that one. So really, it is, and it's kind of both, I guess Adam spoke to it, but Cheryl was looking at it as well. It's really, it was part of it with the EFS, not being able to adjust our number in EFS. That 3 million is there. That 3 million is, is there. So we're going to be contacting EFS to try to get our opening numbers adjusted so make sure they tie back to our revised estimates. The in-year is what we were focusing on, so the in-year data is balanced. It's that opening amount where we really have to make sure it ties to what we had in revised. Do what we have for, for the, the estimates for now. And the three items were, I think Adam actually mentioned it, St. Ceteri, St. Josephine, and some of our turf fields were what the 3 million dollars was. But it, it should be, you're right, it should be higher by, our opening number should be higher by about 3 million dollars. So we'll be contacting the ministry to, to work on getting that adjusted on their side. We can't do it on our end, so that's it. So we were tying our numbers back to EFS and that's what the difference is.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Let me just clarify what's EFS. And, and does the ministry control, like, did they give us this number of 39? Or I thought this was our own internal accounting.
EFS is what we do all our reporting in. It's 250 pages of calculations that we essentially, they lock cells that we can't change. And I know Cheryl was looking at this before, trying to get it to change, so we just couldn't get it changed. So to be transparent, this is what our report said. So we brought this today to match what our EFS report. So it's the big, trustee Kennedy, it's the big, we talk, you know where that page comes up for compliance? That's coming right out of EFS. That's one of the pages in EFS. So that's where, where that, that was a great pickup though.
I see no other hands up. Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
Sure. So you mentioned we're hiring in board administration, few positions. One of them was a payroll advisor.
Yeah.
Does, can you mention the other ones if that's just the one? And is the pay, is there any position in there about attendance supervision?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, there's no positions for attendance support in here. There's one position in HR that had been, had previous approval, but we had a vacancy and we've essentially froze the position due to our financial position the last couple of years that we reopened, as well as we have a temporary payroll supervisor to help address some of the items that were identified in the regional internal auditor's payroll audit. So we've had turnover in our payroll department, especially on the managerial side in 24, 25. So we've essentially had to hire all the supervisors and managers in that department in 24, 25. And so this one remained vacant at revised estimates. And realistically, we weren't going to be able to hire it in 24, 25. So we just removed it from our revised estimates, but we're adding it back on the temporary basis to help us complete that audit. So those are the three positions there. Sorry, there's one, one additional one. We had an additional executive assistant in our admin costs that had been approved a couple of times. But again, we held vacant due to our financial position, but now we're filling the position.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. I'll come back to you if you have questions. So we have other speakers in line. Trustee Ohonchandana, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify something and we don't need Max, our award winner, to come back, but the, the change in revenue is 2.05% and our change in expenses is up 3.9. So we're still net loss, revenue over expenses. My question leading to that is amazing job in getting a balanced budget because going to the CCSD and all those boards, not all of them are in this situation at all and would be very jealous of just sitting at a balanced budget. But I guess my concern from a trustee position and lens is are there any areas of concern? Like, to get this budget to balance, are there any areas we're concerned about going into 2025, 2026? Or we need to watch kind of thing?
There's always areas of concern. We've mentioned some of them on there. Tariffs are a concern. We didn't build that into, really into the budget. So we're not sure the impact, we can't build in what we have really no estimate for. Sick leave is always a concern. We've added more to it, to the contingency. But again, it's something that we just can't control. The WSIB is still a concern. That's, that's always a concern. The fact that our funding for cybersecurity and computers and classroom supplies and such, we talked about this before, hasn't changed. It's still the same. So there's, obviously we have inflation and you can say, well, inflation is now 2% or so, or 1.7, whatever it's at this exact moment. Problem is, we never even got to catch up for all those years where we were behind. So it's really having an impact on us. So those are the areas of concern. The one, I guess, if there's positive, is we did do a lot of adjustments over the last number of years. We've been coming here and we've, we've worked towards that to kind of put us into a better position that we are today to hopefully weather some, some storms that could be on the horizon. But again, there are concerns.
Yeah, and just sort of, sorry, through your chair, just to sort of add a bit on the revenue side. So one of the things that's sort of skewing the number to look like the percentage is less than our increase in operating expenses is just related to the educational development charges. So that's like a $5 million decrease of the 10 million, going against like a $10 million increase in overall revenue. But that's not related to operating expenses. So it doesn't, like, when you factor that into it, the percentage of revenue would exceed of a percentage of operating expenses. But it, it's just a component that we finance our land off of.
Thank you. Just a follow-up comment if I may. And transfer to, getting the extra funding for the temporary accommodation because we've talked about it year over year. And I'd like to thank, it was in the pudding, the resolutions that have been created around the table with colleagues and staff and through other boards have kind of helped get something, that funding. So I guess my, my pitch is we need to continue with those resolutions based upon that risk PowerPoint slide. And we can start to work together to, to continue to lobby with the Ministry of Education for long.
Thank you. Up next, trustee Kennedy. I'll come back to you. Your hand is still up there?
Okay, sure. Just a question about, maybe just to piggyback on what trustee Ohon said. So I did notice that. So our expenses are five and then the revenues are up three. And just, how did you do that again? Can you just clarify?
Yeah, so. Let me, go to the revenue slide. It's a bit, it's a bit confusing because there's this one component in our revenue that's reflected here that really doesn't relate to operating expenses. So our education development charges, essentially we have to raise funds to pay for the land that we build new schools on. And we get that through development charges from the four municipalities in the Halton region. But usually it's a cart before the horse type of thing where we have to buy the land before we've collected the money to build, to pay for the land. So we have a large debt balance with respect to educational development charges. But for ministry compliance purposes, they take out the revenue component of education development charges. So you're seeing a decrease in our education development charges of 5.6 million in revenue, but that's not an operating revenue. It's more capital related to the land. So that decrease is sort of skewing the overall increase in, in revenue. So we should be seeing more of like a 16, almost 17 million increase in, in revenue to cover our operating expenses. And then you can see on our expenses, that's sort of what we are projecting our increase to be in our total expenses of 16.5. So that's, that's sort of how it balances out. But yeah, education development charges and deferred capital contributions are unique to school boards and are kind of divergent from public sector accounting standards. So it confuses every, everybody, to be honest.
Trustee Kennedy, you have a question?
School budgets. So you did mention there, I think it's on page 1, 145, maybe not just now. But it mentions that the school budgets are 4.1 million. You know, there's 2.4 for secondary, 1.7 for elementary. And then due to the projected increase in enrollment, secondary enrollment, an increase in the secondary school budget was provided. Do you have an idea, like, how much did that go up for the secondary? And then in addition, are there any, so we, we went up 3.88% core funding. Just wondering how much the school budget went up. Are there any costs that we're downloading onto secondary or elementary schools this year from the board that they have to pay for from their budget? So I know we had lunchroom supervisors and commissioners that they chose out. Is there anything new that's being added to school boards this year?
I'll pass this to Superintendent Love.
School, school, local school budgets.
I think one thing I should mention, it's something I've been mentioning for a number, actually years now, is that that increase is not on the school level, the non-staffing level of school budgets, right? Those increases haven't changed. We haven't received increases in textbooks, supplies, computers, all those things that hit in the classrooms. We haven't received any increases in there. So just making sure, I, again, I reiterate that fact is that we are not getting increases in that area. You hear about the 2% increase sometimes. They mentioned it's more on the facility side that there's a 2% for our utilities and such. There is no 2% increase for computers and classroom supplies and textbooks. That, that's not, not there. We don't have any. So there isn't any new money. But to answer your question, has there been anything additionally taken? No, in fact, we've added back in. So I think Adam mentioned the, the commissioners, where at least this year, we're, we're splitting the cost at the school needs one. We're splitting the cost. Unfortunately, trustee Kennedy, we need to have advocacy to make sure we get additional funds in our classroom to help with these areas. With inflation and all the concerns that we have as a board, unfortunately, there, there's just, we're a balanced budget and there's ways to do that balanced budget. And it's not necessarily on the backs of the students. It's we haven't really touched any of the other parts of the budget. The school budgets, we really have stayed away from, from adjusting the school budget with the exception of those two items on the secondary panel. So this year, we heard from our schools and we added some back in. And it should be manageable for secondary schools.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So it's, it's just under 100,000, I think, when we add up all the schools that we've added back, plus the 200,000 with the commissioners. So we're making our efforts to kind of put the money back in the classrooms. But again, kind of as I spoke to earlier, a lot of the funding changes that we saw were just to increase the grids for all the areas within the core education funding that had a salary component. And the ministry kept, with the exception of non-salary related facilities costs, status quo of zero increase. And, and then we saw a 2% in increase in operating costs for facilities. Those are the only changes we saw in the funding. So we're starting to get sort of mirror the province in, in that respect, but as best we can. And typically, we get more money to play with when we have increased enrollment. So that's allowing us or affording us the ability to put money back in the classroom, even though the rates that we receive from the province haven't changed in a number of years for those supplies type items.
Thank you. I shall go to trustee Carabella and then trustee Saunders. And then we are going to present this budget again June 24th, right? So you'll have a lot more opportunity there. So trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate all these questions. So thank you for all the answers and going into the details. I was, one of the comments that I've heard over the years was the lack of paper that teachers had access to. And I'm wondering if the, I guess it's part of classroom supplies or part of the school budget? Or has that, has that been alleviated for teachers that they will have a more budget for paper?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So we don't, when we fund the schools, we don't allocate the amount of money that we give to the school by the different kind of expenses that they incur. So it's up to the local school admin to kind of determine how much they're going to allocate to their teachers and for the various components and needs that they may have. So trying to give money back to, to the teachers or to the schools is one step that we hopefully can increase that. But also, we worked with the senior administration, in particular with curriculum and math, to discuss anytime we're using, what, what, some of the feedback we got from the principal group when we did consultations with them is anytime we introduce electronic resources, so if we're moving from a hard textbook to an electronic resource, if there's not enough computers to share for that text, oftentimes it requires paper to print out pages and worksheets and things like that. So we're trying to be cognizant of anytime we're introducing electronic resources that we are considering the paper impacts that might be seen on the backend as we go through that process.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, follow?
Thank you. No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Saunders?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, we just got this, I think, today and I'm just wondering over the next week and I appreciate you guys are busy. How do we communicate any questions to you? Do we send them to you through email and will you accumulate them for the next meeting? Or will you answer them as we move through?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee to trustee Saunders, that would be very appreciative if you could get us your questions and even if you forward them to the chair and then he can collate them and then send them all over and then we can get them ready for you for the next meeting.
Okay. And one small question. So I, I think it was on the statement of changes. We, it, it looked like WSIB and there was a few other changes that I, I would think that, given that, I think we're, we're bringing in 24 teachers, it would be reasonable to be increasing those. And I'm just wondering why we, we left them level? What, what's, is that a reasonable assumption? Or are we just going to create problems for the future?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is just to confirm my understanding, this is when we're looking at our reserves? Like this, this, this slide, is that, that what we're talking about, the 1.1 million and the 7.5?
Things expenses.
Yeah, so right, right now, the projected operating surplus, when we ignore the capital components, is 827,000. So obviously, if there, we've unallocated it right now. So we haven't specified putting it towards anything specifically. But should the need arise, we, we would bring a resolution to the board to move that money to either WSIB or retiring gratuities or any area that needed that, that increase.
Sorry, so I didn't understand. What, we, so we're seeing your.
Yeah, so if you look at the, the slide that talks about the board's financial position.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
That top line item, the operating surplus. So this is the surplus that's built into this budget before we have to address the capital needs. So just as a reminder, anytime the board approves the use of reserves for capital expenditures, we have to fund the amortization of those capital expenditures ourselves. So that draws down on some of our reserves, in particular, the past board-approved capital projects reserve that you see there. And that's where you're seeing the 1.189 million dollar decrease. That's paying for the amortization on those assets. But from an operating perspective, we have an $827,000 surplus that's required because we have to do that double saving to cover those capital, past capital approvals to get us to the $0 surplus deficit for compliance purposes. But having said that, the 827 can be allocated across any of our internally restricted reserves. So if it's the will of the board that they prefer that money to be allocated to a specific item that's on this list or an item that's not on this list, creating a new reserve, we can do that. But right now, we've just left it unallocated in operating surplus. But it wouldn't change anything. It would just move from that, that 827 from being on the top line to spread amongst the other lines in our internally restricted reserves. It's confusing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at, yeah, I, I think, see what you're saying is to say, I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in.
So we, we monitor it. Typically WSIB costs, like, we pay as incurred. So we really would only have to tap into the, the WSIB line if our WSIB exceeded sort of what we were projecting through our actuaries for the year. But obviously, if that number starts to draw down and we're not feeling comfortable, we would allocate funds from our operating surplus that's unallocated. So at the end of 25, 26, we're projecting that balance to be around 5.8 million. So we have that money to kind of be available to us to be reallocated against internally restricted reserves if the board wants us to, to do that or we feel we need to and we propose that to the board.
Okay, thank you. I'm just being cognizant of time. We still have a lot of items on the agenda. I will take trustee Kennedy's item, questions now. And then we will move on. Trustee, we'll have another opportunity to ask all questions at the, on the June 24th meeting. And so, so trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Just a quick one. So why do we expect to increase legal fees, is this just a contingency by 200,000? You said you're adding 200,000 to that, that line?
Go ahead.
Increase legal fees by 200,000? I don't know. Like, is there a reason why? Is it something we're experiencing to add that to the budget to board administration?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's just, we've seen some areas where legal fees can be, can be higher. So we've been proactive on that and adding more for that.
Thank you.
Say what those are.
Probably not.
And just lastly, just can we can we put our next board meeting on the agenda on the website? It wasn't there. I had someone ask if we have a meeting next week. They thought we were voting today because is there anything going to change from now to next week or no?
Yeah. We are, we are meeting on June twenty fourth. The timing and the agenda is not decided yet.
Yeah, but it's the same information.
Yeah.
There's no change.
Through you, there'll be some some minor adjustments. So the total dollars won't change, but we have some tidying up as we were preparing for the meeting in some of the allocations, as well as we'll hope to have fixed the opening reserve component that was presented in the last report and at this meeting to properly reflect the forty one million that it should.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation once again. Superintendent Loftus, your team, Cheryl and Mr. Croft, thank you so much. And there's other parts of the team who are not here tonight. But yes, we will be having an opportunity to ask. Trustees, please feel free to submit your questions and feedback. And I'm going to send trustees an email. There is a PD session which is managed by the ministry on on essential governance for education finance. I'm going to send a reminder to trustees. It's important that we do that before we come to the next meeting. So with that, thank you so much. We shall now move on to item ten point two. Milton number eleven Catholic elementary school boundary review, school boundary review committee recommendation. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Dylan and Bronco here from our planning team to walk you through a brief. I know what's relating the night now with a brief synopsis of the Milton number eleven boundary review.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, the item before trustees is a staff report for the recommendation of the school boundary review committee regarding the Milton eleven Catholic elementary school boundary review. Milton eleven is being developed to address growing enrollment and accommodation pressures in the Boeing area of South Milton. It is expected with this expected opening in twenty in the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year, the goal of the school boundary review committee was to optimize student placement while minimizing the number of transitions for students. The school boundary review committee undertook a thorough process, including community consultation, committee meetings and an online feedback survey. Over eighty percent of the committee feedback respondents supported or were neutral toward the proposed options as presented by the committee at the public meeting. Based on the public feedback received, the committee refined and endorsed option B three C, which best meets the criteria for balanced enrollment and transportation efficiency. I'll hand it over now to Dylan to go over the key recommendations.
Thanks Bronco. So the key recommendations include reassigning areas fifty three B, fifty three C and B fifty eight from Saint Veronica Catholic Elementary School and much of the rural areas in East Milton from Saint Peter Catholic Elementary School to Milton number eleven when the school opens. A map of these areas of change is provided in appendix C. What that would also mean is the new development areas to the east of the current urban area would be held at Milton number eleven until new schools open in those communities. Milton number eleven will also open as a grade one to five French immersion school. A new grade will be added each year until the school has the full grade one to eight French immersion program. More details of this program and the feeder schools are provided in the report. And lastly, the legacy exceptions will be provided to eligible students for both regular track and French immersion as outlined in the report. This recommendation supports sustainable growth, efficient use of resources and minimizing transitions for students as best as possible. Following tonight's meeting, the report will be provided as an action item for trustee consideration and approval at the June twenty fourth board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for presenting the report. Trustees, any questions for Bronco and Dylan? So just a reminder, this Milton number eleven is adjacent property to Saint Ceteri. Saint Ceteri School just besides that is Milton number eleven. So so if no questions, then I want to thank you. And I want to thank all our parents who were there. I was happy to be part of the process and was enjoyable process here. So so thank you so much and this will be an action item at the next June twenty fourth meeting. Can I move on to our next order of business, which is information items, director's report, one eleven point one. Director Klein, please present your report.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you, everyone. That's a fairly robust report and I'm going to try and head through it fairly quickly, but you'll see there's themes within it as well. I think one of them is the responsiveness we try and have for our students in terms of giving them opportunities to learn more about themselves, giving them opportunities to learn more about what the is in store for them in the in the future and the world. And we'll start with Career Exploration Day. It's a recent event that involved students in that key age group of late junior, early intermediate, grade six to eight, to be precise, where they met at Heritage Park in Milton. And it gave them an opportunity to dig into some experiences of skilled trades and then to help them, you know, see and discern what their strengths and what their interests are in terms of future. So these are future tradespeople, future technicians in many ways. And this helps them, again, even in a fairly rudimentary way, begin to think about what courses they might want to take when they head into their Catholic high school, grade eights the next year or the maybe the semester into that would be for them. But others, it's a good opportunity to map out where they might be. The there's a great focus in terms of women and girls in the trades. And just last Thursday, there was an empowering girls' STEAM event that took place at Loyola. And one of the things that it's very important for all our students, but for the the young students or the students in this age, again, grade at key grades and age group of five to eight, grades five to eight, not age five to eight, was to see a panel of women who reflected in terms of their choices and their careers and their trades that might A, answer some questions, B, form some form of modeling for our students when they're making decisions in terms of what their next steps would be in their learning and their careers. Just in time for a new kindergarten program to begin, which we haven't heard about, but hope we don't jinx ourselves here. The Ministry of Education has created a portal for parents and others to learn more about the kindergarten program. Kindergarten program is very different than one all the way through. It's unique in many, many ways. And and I personally, I think it's a wonderful program, a fantastic program. So just to say that that the portal for that is on our website. It is something we will reinforce with new parents heading into the elementary schools in the fall. And I think it's good for all of us to learn that because it is, again, so different than one through to twelve and beyond. June also marks has for a few hundred years a focus on the Sacred Heart of Jesus. The feast day for that great event in our faith is at the last day of school this year, June twenty seventh. And that feast promotes students as discerning believers and reflective thinkers and caring family members. That comes up in the graduate expectations. There's a whole whack or a ton of resources that our staff have provided for our students and for our teachers in various schools. I know it's getting cold in here, so people have to warm up. Catholic Education Week, just when you thought it was over, we're already getting ready for next week. Whoever organizes this and it comes through Oxta and ICE and and others, they are, they are tireless. And because they've already got things ready for next year and it will evolve. By the time we get here in September, they will have themes for for each days. They will have prayer services that begin in September and mark the liturgical calendar. But the theme for two thousand twenty six, if you can think that far ahead, is Catholic Education Week Pilgrims of Hope on the Path to Holiness. Sounds like a movie, really good one, too. May third to May eighth. And there's subthemes as in every Catholic Education Week, each day has a certain theme. And and you can see what those are as well. Some of them actually reflect not only the sort of tail end of the Jubilee of Hope, which ends next or this coming Christmas, but also if you get a chance to Google it, there's a beautiful letter written by the Catholic bishops of Canada, probably about two or three years old, to be quite honest, to the young people of Canada. If you ever just want a beautiful moment, it's three pages long, but a couple of them, the first lessons are God loves you. And and I and I love that. I think some of this is reflected in that as well. And there'll be tons of resources for others, including a they, they, they have artists in Ontario that create a song and record a song, and that's a song for for the year as well. And they usually do that by the late fall. The HCCF is something that we've, we've had them here in this, in this room. Many of you have participated in many of their fundraising. And it's an objective fact that pretty much every single school on this board has been able to be supported and more than the school, students and families have been supported. Bishop's banquet, we certainly remember hearing from in all these cases, it was women who'd come from Ukraine, come from other parts of the world where, let's face it, there were pretty traumatic events occurring and had help from the HCCF. What I want to point out is that the eighth of July, and there's a link here, you can still dive into this. There is an annual golf fundraiser. It is for me, it is very early on July eighth. I will go into my shed, I will dust the dust off the golf bag and I will go for my one, one day of golfing and I look forward to that. As long as nothing twists or snaps or tears, I think I've had a good time. And I always golf with the priest, so either way I'm doing okay. Again, just to reinforce that, we are constantly endeavoring to bring staffs together, not just staffs in schools, but central staff together to work with our students in terms of allowing them opportunities to think about how they're called to try and build a kingdom of justice and peace and joy. And we recently, just at the end of May, I was able to go visit some of these students who were phenomenal. And again, Sita and was a part of the crew there, but many, many others were there leading this, called this Take Space and Make Space. And there were two hundred and four grade seven students and about forty five staff and supervisors from pretty much all of our schools. And it was designed to uplift student voice and foster belonging. What I thought was really beautiful is my memory was, I think it was St. F X, I could be wrong, but some students there, older boys who were there, and they were phenomenal with these younger students in a way that, let's be honest, as an adult, you just, you don't have the, you just can't do it. You're not operating at that, that, with that signal, but they were able to do that. And and again, I think all of these events are things that, you know, it's just there. And then twenty years from now, one of those students will say, yeah, there was that one thing that came and that maybe pushed me in a certain direction. So the Holy Spirit operates in a zillion different ways. And that's one of them is through these little events and we just have to remain open to it. Celebration of Staff was just before the CCSTA event two weeks ago. And it was a beautiful opportunity, pretty good, I think, because of our timing, we had a pretty good turnout for that. Eighty three staff members celebrated twenty five years of service and sixty three were retiring. I'm not sure if there's, if I have stats at my fingertips, but we see a little bump right now with that. And it was our annual celebration of staff, took place at Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School. We had mass celebrated by Monsignor Omahani again. He made the joke that he was representing the bishop and I think he is loving it as well. And we're losing him as well because he's moving on to a parish in Hamilton and he'll be greatly missed. Great presentations, refreshments were there. A lot of people from this building were there to work and do cleanup and serving drinks and cake slices and stuff late into the evening. I'd like you to pay particular attention to the fact that we had SHSM students from a variety of schools, Corpus Christi, Notre Dame to be highlighted and floral 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 arrangements that were there, too, came from all those SHSM programs. And it was a great way, again, to celebrate people's achievements. Hadn't seen charcuterie boards being handed out before, but I think it was ingenious and I was very grateful. Although I was with trustee Agnew and when I was on my fifteenth charcuterie board, I was starting to get a little hungry because I wanted something, wanted something on that. National Indigenous Peoples' Day, June twenty first, that's a Saturday. That does not call us away from the dedication that we have to ensuring that education, which Murray Sinclair said is something that got us into a dark space in terms of our relations with the first peoples and first nations of this country. Education is something that's going to get us out of it. And Catholic education, I think, is a particular call and responsibility and opportunity to do that. And if you're ever wondering, there's a whole whack of policies and documents from the Ministry of Education, too, that supports that. It's, I think that's sometimes important. And this just in, duh, 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 duh. For the second consecutive year in a row, hold your applause, please. We've been ranked the most energy efficient school, school board in Ontario. And I would report that this is for all twenty seventy two school boards. And that's over five thousand schools in this great province of ours, some of which, again, worked very hard on this as well, were the only school board to be ranked first in two consecutive years. And that, again, a lot of that goes to a lot of people. But I think, you know, a tip of the hat should go to Superintendent American and his team as well. But it does take a lot of people to do things like, you know, shutting off switches and being aware about heating and stuff like that. So it would make my my long gone but grumpy dad in the seventies and eighties, who was always yelling at us, make him very proud to know about that, that it can be done. It can be done. Saint Jerome's University, I like to think of our of our education system in our Catholic schools is not just, you know, K to twelve, but we we really have partners that go beyond those, those, those grades. And we have a great partner in Saint Jerome's University in Waterloo. And the president there is very engaged in partnering with all of the school boards and the diocese. We meet occasionally with the bishop and all the other boards, but Saint Jerome's is absolutely, how can we help you? Now can you help us learn more about this continuum of Catholic education? There are, just to say that we do have some staff members who have gone through some sort of leadership formation, who are part of what's known as the certificate in Catholic leadership. And they are part of that this year and we're going to be continuing that next year as well. Part of it involves things like they're mentored by someone at the university. They are able to go on projects, like sort of social justice projects, either within the community or beyond the community. They are encouraged to create some form of project or capstone project for their, for their board or their community, too, that dovetails with all of this. And they also get a chance to, as everybody loves, of course, it's spend an evening or two in Waterloo at one of the lectures in Catholic experience. And there's really nothing better in life than that. The multi-year strategic plan monitoring survey, again, just so lucky to have Dr. Colmore and her team here with us because we make the best decisions when we have solid data, whether that's quantitative or qualitative, when we have, particularly when we have someone to help us steer through data and information because it's not always easy. And right now, until the twenty seventh, I think at midnight or eleven fifty nine on the twenty seventh, it's the opportunity for people to go into it and to give some feedback on where we are with the NYSP. That will help us then as we start into the new year, by new year, I mean school year, tweak our efforts and our successes with our NYSP. And we even include the link there for those of you to go into. And everybody out there who's a stakeholder in Catholic education or a critical friend of education, a Catholic school education to to chime in. So thus endeth the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your exciting report. We have a lot of things happening in our school across our system. So really appreciate the wonderful work done across the system. Trustee, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the director, Superintendent Merrick. The pending question that I have, will you have air conditioning in your office this summer?
It all depends on you, you guys, really. I think, yeah, it's stuffy and smelly enough without me being in there in a ninety five degree heat. Superintendent Merrick, are we right?
Yeah, we're going to have it back on in select areas here in the summer, so. Very, very select areas.
Trustees, any any further questions? Trustee Agnew? Trusty Agnew?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, just a comment. I had the opportunity to attend the Take Space, Make Space. And I volunteered my time and they put me to work. But I just, you know, it's as a parent of two boys, it's you don't often see grade sevens get excited about a lot of things. And they were excited and they were there. And it was such a wide range of students that we saw. And everybody came in enthusiastic, couldn't wait to start the day, excited for their search, excited for where they were going to head. And you had to see that many people participating, that many students just eager and excited. You could just feel the vibe. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out, I know you already did, but a huge shout out to Sita and everybody who participated and volunteered. And it was truly amazing to see that many people there. And the number of staff that came out to support was was amazing. So just a kudos for that. It was really, really nice to to do that and see that excitement.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. That's a great way to wrap the year up and and celebrate our achievements. So thank you for that. Thank you, Director Klein. And so we shall now move on to our next item, 11.2, 2024-25. Math Achievement Plan. Superintendent Skripak, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like I already trained my successor, so I don't quite know what to do next. But it's always a good thing when we have somebody to replace us. Just this presentation is rooted out of our multi-year strategic plan. We focus typically on the achieving pillar, but I want to assure you that believing, belonging and becoming do become part of the critical work that we do as well. But for reporting purposes, we tend to kind of focus here. These are fully aligned with the provincial goals. As I always come back to this, this is part of my mandate to ensure that I'm implementing the provincial math achievement action plan. And I always like to summarize these three as the first one is the curriculum and the policies that we have as a board that from the ministry that we have to implement, including intentional use of high impact instructional practices. The second one deals with how much our students are supposed to know leading up to the moment that they learn the curriculum. So they don't just learn how to add. There's a lot of counting strategies as an example that lead up to the point that a child might learn about addition. And the last one is to actually know where the student is at and to learn more about who they are as a person within our system. I really appreciated our presentation on our system mental health strategy plan. And elements of that appear in the work that we do in mathematics as well. So Halt and Catholic continues to focus on two core resources, math up and mathology. The supplementary resources that we use and encourage are Knowledge Hook and TBO Learn. We recently revised our scope and sequence. So a scope and sequence for everybody here, I explained it at a little bit later time there, is what to teach and when. So we provide a sample scope and sequence for all teachers to use. We currently revise the grade one and two for teachers. PD was provided on the PD day in September to support staff learning more about the resources that we provide and the revision of the scope and sequence. We actually measure how many times people access the resource that we provide to access the scope and sequence. So we saw an 11% increase since March. 803 individual teachers accessed this resource in order to understand more about our prescription, our, 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 our plan and implementation. Digital math tools, this comes part of the responsive education programs grant to us from the ministry. Knowledge Hook matches the description, so we procure Knowledge Hook as part of this. It's a key part of the professional learning cycle that we advocated this year for and part of the student achievement plan. We saw 41% increase of use of Knowledge Hook, individual teacher usage, 1,110. So that's a 41% increase. And that's 27,064 students, so a 26% increase since February. These are numbers and metrics that are measured and monitored by the ministry. They do ask us to report back. I believe we're hitting their targets quite well. And then through the digital math tools, we also, this is where we get the Caribou Math Contest. I do want to mention, and you know, our sympathies go to the Caribou Math Team. The founder of this, Thomas Wolfe, passed away unexpectedly in May. We've been reassured that that won't impact the contest in the future, but I can tell you that he was a very pivotal element in the implementation of this. So our condolences go out to the math team at Brock University. We were able to have 2,419 individual students participate in a Caribou Math Contest this year. That's a total of 6,709. The good news is I surpassed the goal that I had set of 1,500 students participating this year. That's 100%, 60% of the goal. Just means that we have more room to grow for next year too. There's about six individual contests that are written. The top five are taken into consideration for a student when it comes to the worldwide contest, as you kind of noticed. There's some results here. I'll let you take your time to take a look at some of the amazing accomplishments of our school. Max is not the only one who's done some great work. I do want to specifically point out Saint Ignatius Loyola. That's, I believe, first in Canada as well of schools that wrote. So we're very happy there. And we continue to see some achievements that demonstrate the great work that's happening in our schools and also the support that students receive both from their homes and their educators when it comes to mathematics. And we also have the same levels of success that we're seeing in our elementary schools. One competition I did want to point out that we participated in this year that we'd like to grow. These fine gentlemen over here on the right hand side, the person on the left is their teacher, Jacob Sitchner from Notre Dame. We also are encouraging our students from different areas of math that are studying mathematics to also take part in competition. Mohawk College promotes just one of those competitions. The students on the right aren't going to an academic math program. They're actually going into a college stream math program and/or a skilled trade. One is going into the mining industry, one is going into ductwork. And I think it's great to celebrate the accomplishments of all of our students and recognize that math is important, not just at an academic level, but it's something that's going to be used on a frequent basis by most of our students. And we know how important the skilled trades are going to be in the long term future. So it's worth promoting mathematics achievement accomplishments more than just the academic level. And that's what this contest did. For the record, they came in first as well. And we also encourage students to participate in the University of Waterloo Math Contest. And you'll notice that in second, in grade 10, not to take away from Max's accomplishment at Holy Trinity, but we had another student who also had a perfect score of 150. And as you know, that is a significant accomplishment to achieve. So congratulations to Ziu He, who was able to get a perfect score of 150 in grade 10. We had a number of other participants. And we're also promoting the University of Waterloo Math Contest as well as the Caribou in our elementary schools to encourage students to keep considering mathematics as a great way to demonstrate their achievement. The big focus in our professional development this year for mathematics was the content focus for improved learning. So as I described this in February, we asked schools and I lead principals through a conversation to kind of analyze their EQAO data to understand which specific area of mathematics. There are actually six strands of math that we teach. Five of them are formally assessed by EQAO and through by teachers and their evaluation for report cards. So what we tried to do is identify and isolate through the EQAO data which specific strand teachers may need to focus on a little bit more in professional development and provide the support through Knowledge Hook and some professional release time. The three main areas that we identified in the data was ironically data, the use of data, spatial sense, which is measurement and rotational symmetry, a lot of other concepts, and number sense. As you can see in the graph here, we actually saw some very nice data that came out of this. What we asked teachers to do is a before and after kind of snapshot where students coming in, identify which students are struggling, take those students and do some intervention work that is provided through Knowledge Hook or through their own knowledge that we've provided. And afterwards, do another assessment to take a look at how students are doing. And you can see that there's some pretty decent results here in terms of moving students forward. So if a student was struggling in the area of data, the teacher did some intervention work. When they finished that cycle of learning, we saw some great improvement in the student, in the ability of the student. So to do this, we had one one job embedded release date. That's professional development for each teacher in grades three through six. And that's around 400 teachers. In total, we had 225 release days access to support this work. To be clear, some of those examples, this is all job embedded in the classroom. So we're not asking teachers to go to a professional development somewhere off site. We're asking them to do this with their students and provide them the support that they might need in order to do this work, in order to experiment with their craft or to learn a new technique. So this learning more about Knowledge Hook, maybe bringing a representative from Knowledge Hook to support the teacher in learning more about the tool, working in small groups with students in the class and understanding some of the techniques that might be used to support them, co-teaching with a colleague in the classroom to learn a new model of teaching potentially, developing more understanding about the content specifically, as you notice in number two, that's one of our focuses, analyzing the student data. So speaking one to one with their principal and saying, here's what I know about my class. And some of those things do require some release time in order to be able to do that and have some fulsome conversations. We also have that focus on high impact instructional practices. Many of those things that you saw in our content learning cycle appeared within there, deliberate practice, giving students specific instruction and saying, OK, I want you to try these questions because I noticed you're struggling with just these questions. So if you remember the time when you did 100 practice questions because your teacher told you to, we don't actually encourage that. We ask them to do like, how would you find exactly where a student might be struggling and give them the 10 questions they need to improve? Direct instruction, a model of of learning, tools of representation. So we know that students learn more when they're given tools to actually work with instead of just being told, here's how to do this. Here's some fraction strips or fraction bars that you might be able to use. I'm not going to keep going because I know that I can go on forever about that. So we also have a partnership, as I've mentioned before, with Halt and Black Voices with tutoring. What I would point out in this slide is we do use the support of our Black Graduation Coach in in two schools, specifically St. Ceteri and and St. Francis Xavier, who have access to the Black Graduation Coach to support students, encourage them to continue their tutoring should they feel like they're it's not working out for them. But we know that it's a great program because the data supports it. Black Voices will be giving us some data in July to tell us how things are going. In total, we provided 12 tutoring sessions for most students. Some received less as they may have entered into the equation a little bit later. We try to enter their names in in March. But sometimes we notice a student that might be struggling in April after their mid semester report cards come out. So we try to provide as much learning as possible and support through this initiative. The other program we do provide is through Learn Style. This is for students with autism. As you can see through the data here, this has tremendous impact on our students in this area. Always incredibly impressed with the data that we see. You can see the before and after, the students in the first, many wouldn't even turn on the cameras. And by the end, 90% of the students want to turn their cameras on. Initially, you know, only one of the students or two maybe only want to make any meaningful, relevant conversation. And you can kind of see the criteria and the measures that they used in order to demonstrate the success of the initiative for the students. And specifically, just so everybody knows, this is in the area of coding. Mathematics is an excellent opportunity in a lot of different areas for students to access and do some collaborative work. And this specifically focuses on coding as an area that we know generates a lot of interest for our students. We also participate in our specifically through our special education department, but not limited to special education, the Do the Math Program. This comes from an author in the United States. Her name is Marilyn Burns. This program has continued to show success for us as demonstrated through our work and research and through the outcomes from students. You can see that we had 28 schools participating, 53 groups are reported to date, over 160 students. And this is just the data we have to date. So you have to bear with me, we it's still June and people are still working through the reports. You could see through this data the improvement that our students make every time they participate. Right? If I could just highlight a couple, you know, you started adding and subtraction and you have a 58% success rate, but then you move to 80% of the answers correct later on. Right? And fractions A, which we know to be such a critical component of the work we do. Only 36% of the questions may have been answered correctly at first. But after the cycle of intervention is completed, 94% of the questions are completed. So we know that the work is making a difference with our students and we continue to support this through our special education team. And you could see some more facts there. And this is the part that warms my heart. 86% of the students that agree or strongly agree that participating and do the math helped them. And 67% agreed or strongly agreed that they feel more confident. And I see this in action when I go take a look at students doing Do the Math and I talk to them about the program. And then I speak to teachers about the impact that it's had when the students come back into the class. And it's not just the students saying this, it's the teachers noticing this themselves of the increased confidence and the ability of the students. So we continue to look at ways to expand this program and bring that into more the hands of more students. The priority school model, so that everybody knows, we have two itinerant teachers who were placed in four schools. And one secondary itinerant was placed in one school this year. This is the program that they use. So this was at the beginning of the year, all white. And you can notice that we're now in May and all of these interventions took place and all of this work took place. I'm looking forward to being able to share data next year. As to the impact of this, there is some minimal, some data that we have. Please note that these schools, they represent about 8% of our grade three students and 10% of our grade six students across the board. This is the model that's kind of proposed and supported by the ministry. It would be very appreciated if they gave us money for that too. But that's just another conversation. We did, this is some of the data that came that comes out of our priority schools. And we did see that there was a noticeable difference in terms of the outcomes for students when it came to working in the priority school with some of the support from our itinerants. And you could see that there was some significant gains on the part of our students in terms of mathematics based on the interventions provided. And we're also finishing up our our last round of screening for Numeracy. This was a project that we had slated for June. So we have been doing this for the last couple of weeks with approximately 1,200 students. And the data will come back again because this is our last, this is our previous data that was collected in October. So more to speak about a little bit later as we complete this work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Skripak. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Trustee, any question? Trustee O'Hanlon, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Skripak. I just love how much you love math. That's really just a comment. I just love how you love math. That's it. Keep it up. Keep it up.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hanlon. Trustees, any other questions, comments? So I want to thank you for presenting this achievement plan and results. So really appreciate that. I can really feel the classroom vibe out here. So so thank you again for that. And we look forward to you presenting the report in in the fall. Okay, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For for more riveting pleasure, I can bring a lesson in.
Thank you. With that, we shall. With that, we shall move on to item 11.3, Provincial Consolidation of School Board Financial Statements, Accountants Report with respect to seven month period from September 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Please find attached everyone the Provincial Consolidation of the School Board Financial Statement Accountant's Report for the seven month period ended or started from September 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025. This report is required by the province to align with its March 31st year end. This report was successfully filed with the Ministry of Education by May 14th. Their deadline's the 15th. And this report is presented as information, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, any questions for Superintendent Loft? Saying none, trustee Kennedy, hand is up, you're the floor.
I'm just wondering on the the board that when the board approved in March, the 614,000 and 100,000, one was technology, one was security. Does that show up in these numbers here already, having been spent?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't believe they would, trustee Kennedy, only because I'm trying to think back. It was May, it was March that we did it. We got the approval for it. So this was as of March 31st. And I don't think any school really, if it was, it would have been a minor amount that we would have done by then because we just got the approval in the middle of March, right? And it was, so I don't think any of that money would show up on this.
Staff says no.
Staff says no. Yeah, which is what.
Yes, thank you, Cheryl. Yes. Thank you.
So, okay, so, so what we, have we taken that out of reserves though, to be put in this year's budget? If we don't, if it's not, if it's not going to be spent, will it be taken out of reserves? Good question.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, Trustee Kennedy, if it's, if we end in a positive non, or a non-deficit balance, we won't take it out of reserves. So we're not going to take it out just to take it out. It'll stay there. So if we don't need it, we're not going to take it out. If we, like overall, if we have enough savings in other areas that kind of offset that six fourteen, then we'll just, we won't be moving it out. So nothing has been taken out of reserves as of yet. So we wouldn't do that to year end till we do all of our statements and see where we're at.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. You have another question? Sure.
So I just have a question about revenue. So the year before, we had revenues up about three, around May, three point four, expenses were up about one point five. And that was last year. And then this year, we've got revenues up nine point seven, but expenses are up more than revenues. So how is it looking like as of May? It, I thought I read that we're behind by about a million. Is that still roughly what we're buying?
I think, Trustee Kenny, are you looking at the quarterly report? Eleven, are you looking at item eleven point four or eleven point three? Because this is just on the, the ministry report on where we were as of March thirty-first. We also have a quarterly report that's as of May thirty-first. So, which is my next, which was the next item. That's why. Yeah, I think we're not on that. I'm on two sixty-three. Can you just, can you just read the top line on, on what report you're looking at?
So it's page two sixty-three, item eleven point five?
Yeah, we're only on eleven point three.
I think we're a little ahead of those.
Oh, sorry.
That's why I was asking. I thought you were, those questions seemed a little more, yeah.
We are getting there.
But your answer for the first one still applies.
We are getting there. Okay. Okay, we'll get there. Okay, so. With that, yeah, thank you for presenting this report. Superintendent Loft, this shall move to item eleven point, eleven point four, twenty twenty-five, Long-Term Capital Plans. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Please find attached the Halt and Catholic District School Boards Long-Term Capital Plan, the final report and feedback that looks at our capital needs for the next fifteen or so years. I'd like to acknowledge the work of Dylan Kanasiskara, our supervisor of planning. Dylan, you've heard him tonight talk a little earlier, and as well as Bronco, Bronco Bitovic, our senior manager for a amount of extensive work that goes into this report, Mr. Chair. This report is being presented as information.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up for this item. I saw some questions. Trustee Carabella, you sent some questions in. Do you want to ask?
Yep, I have my hand up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for, in Oakville, or just the long-term capital plan regarding, regarding closing schools to cross boundary. So I'd just like to know the process a bit, like, when do you decide to close a school? And how full or at capacity it is before you close the school? Who makes the decision? And when is it determined each year? And how is it communicated to the community? And one more question, what would, what would or could it be reversed in the future?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I think we have a monitoring in place. Is it lifted? Okay, so Superintendent Merrick, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So typically we wait for the new registrations to come in. That's usually end of January, early February. We get new JK registrations comes in. We use that to update our enrollment data. And then we look at the projected enrollments for all the schools. If it's, if the enrollment for a school, the utilization of a school is less than eighty percent, it's easy, it's open. If it's more than ninety percent, it's easy, it's closed. If it's in that eighty to ninety percent range, it's a little bit tricky. So, I mean, if it's in the low eighties and it's going up, we might say we're going to close it because we see more enrollment coming for that school. If it's kind of stable in the low eighties, maybe we leave it open for a couple of years. We, we try to minimize the changes and not be only open, close, open, close every year. But it, it is a bit subjective if it's, you know, eighty to ninety percent utilization, but that's typically the process we go through. Our planning team makes the recommendation for it. We bring it to senior staff. We have a look at it here and then we approve it there. And we try to minimize changes to that. But it, I mean, it is, it's using projections, so it's a bit of a, bit of art and bit of math to it as well.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up?
Yes, just how is it communicated to the community? Because, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so it, we have it posted on our, our, our school planning website. So when you go to our board website, what school your kids will go to, it's posted right there. And that's where, so when our people are registering for school, that's where you would look and that's where it's posted there. So typically after we approve it at our senior admin table, that's where it's posted on there. And that's what is going, like, usually would be posted like March, maybe early April the latest. And that's for the following school year, for the, the following September.
So just follow up, you don't just announce it to the school as a whole. It's more people who are, who would need. Okay.
Yeah, I've seen it on the board website. It's on the board website.
And then.
On the same site where you would find the cross-boundary form. So if you're looking for cross-boundary form, that's, that's where it is. So, yeah.
And I think you answered the question that it could be reversed if the enrollment goes down or if it becomes face. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Trustees, any further questions? For Superintendent Loft on the Long-Term Capital Plan, seeing none. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting this item. Shall now move on to item eleven point five, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Third quarter, September first, twenty twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And please find attached the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget report ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Chair, this report is submitted as information.
Thank you. I think Trustee Kennedy had a question? No.
Thank you. So I know this is information. So from now then until, I guess, the end of August, we're not really going to have really any more updates than really on how the, this current year is, is going, right?
Superintendent Loft, good.
So, Mr. Chair, through you. That's correct, Trustee Kennedy. We are though anticipating that we should be at this, this preliminary stage. We should be looking at a balance at the end of the year, a balance, a balanced budget. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
So it does say though that we're behind by like, you know, by about eight hundred thousand. Do you think that's going to correct? I mean, it's just May to May.
Yeah.
July and August could be different and June.
Maybe I'll.
Yeah, Mike, do, do you have Mike there? You'd like to come?
So just, well, just maybe you could just tell us generally. So it's May, we have the May numbers in. It says on page two sixty-three, revenues are three hundred ninety-four point four, expenses are three ninety-five point two. So that's higher than revenue. Are we?
Those revenue numbers, sorry, of three ninety-four, that's decreased by the DDCs that we were talking about earlier as well. So operationally, those, as Adam referred to in his presentation, they're, they're not included in the operating revenue versus expenses. So it'd be the four oh four revenue versus the, pardon me, the expenses of three ninety-five.
And through you, Mr. Chair. So where are we generally trending then in May? So as, as of May, are we fairly balanced as of May thirty-first?
And yeah, right now, the, on the overview page, the operating surplus is a nine point six. But yeah, based on trend, with it being seventy-five to ninety percent right now. As you can see, all the categories and the overall revenue and expenses are aligning with that percentage completion for the year. So everything seems to be trending in the right direction at this point.
Okay. So when we look at the, the revenue, at the very bottom, it says year-over-year, May this year versus May last year. It shows that we're up about nine point six, nine point seven. I don't know if that's the same number we're using. But it says our expenses, May to May are up about eleven point four. So are we still trending in the right direction or is that, does that have any impact on where we stand?
Superintendent Loft, you want to help out?
I'll, I'll jump in here a little bit. So are we looking on the summary page then, right? Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Yeah, and unfortunately, my report is cutting off on the other one. It's up on the screen. Yeah. So maybe if you go to the next, so we're looking at the summary there, right? If we go to the next screen though, I think might be a better way to look at it. And there's, we go to the next, we put it up on the screen, Rosie? Correct, yeah. Okay, I'll report eleven point five. And I'm looking at the revenue, which would be page two sixty-six. I just, for whatever reason, mine's cut off. Yeah, we did that either. You have a copy? Now, let me just go, I'll go pull up the Excel version so I can see.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. So similar to how we talked about in the budget, one of the numbers on the revenue page that's sort of skewing things from an operational standpoint is the educational development charges. Like when you look at where we were last May, we had almost twenty million collected in educational development charges. This year, we only have the ten point four. So there's a nine point five million dollar decrease in our revenue related to EDCs, which from, when we're looking at operating from a compliance perspective, that's excluded. And, and so that's, that's sort of what's driving why we only see a nine point five million dollar positive change in revenue because we have a nine point five million dollar decrease in EDC revenue. But if you take that out, we're in a better financial position when we're just looking at our operating expenses, excluding our costs related to the land. So the land kind of messes this up and we might, maybe we'll consider presenting it differently in future quarterly reports. So it's like a separate component that doesn't muddy the waters, but that's, that's sort of why we're kind of seeing higher expenses, but lower revenues just because of the EDCs. And then in, in our expenses, there is an operating EDC component, which is the interest on our debt that we then use to pay for. Or we use, we use the EDCs collected to cover that interest first. That's why Andrew was kind of speaking to, looking at the four oh four number as the comparative because really we would, there's about one point five million in interest costs on the EDC land as of May. We'd be using part of that ten point four and actually a lot, bringing it into operating revenue as the ministry allows to cover that cost. So that's, EDCs is, we might, we might do a PD on EDCs just to kind of walk through it. It's, it's frustrating, to be honest, to even just, just deal with. But that's, those are the drivers of, of that change.
Do you, do you see where that is? I have it up now. So the EDC rev, I think it's, it's right on the bottom, other revenue on the revenue spreadsheet, where it says EDC revenue, we had the budget was estimated budget of eighteen million or so, eighteen point two. And then to date, we're only at ten million dollars or ten point four. So that's eight million dollars right there, or sorry, trustee Kennedy, where it's like Adam said, it doesn't really impact our bottom line, even though it shows that it does impact our bottom line from this. Reality is, it doesn't. Yeah, there's, these are kind of ministry prescribed reports. So this does skew that number for you. Now I see what you're saying. Yeah, it does look.
Good, thank you. You got it? Got the answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, just last thing. So they, I noticed last year, so we, we originally in June had a potentially unbalanced budget, projection.
Yeah, projection.
And in December, it was projected balanced. Great. Looks like we're kind of balanced right now. So one of the things, two of the things last year we mentioned were that maybe sick leave, things like that can improve. And also maintenance. Was it the other one? It was like a million and then four hundred thousand. But I noticed like, so this year, we have occasional teachers that are up about one point one million. I don't know if that's related to sick leave or not, or something else. And maintenance is up two and a half million or two point six. So how's that going?
So we actually, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So what happened at revised, we were initially forecasting the deficit last June, right? And it was, a large part was bill one twenty-four, all the goals with bill one twenty-four. Ministry did provide additional funding over the summer and into the fall, which really helped us to go swing it from a negative to a positive, right? So at the time in December, we adjusted a lot of the things that we had some extra funding for and added it back in. Which obviously helped us and is allowing us now to do some of the things that, that we thought we might have to cut. So that's, the, the big part of it, trustee Kennedy, was when we did it back in June, we weren't sure of the impact of bill one twenty-four. And then throughout the summer, we got a, a good, a good sum of money to really help with it that we weren't really expecting per se. So that's allowed us to make those changes this year. For, now for current year, bill one twenty-four obviously doesn't exist anymore. Like we've, everybody's up to date, we're, we're smooth. But a lot of those changes we had made before. We've continued forward. So it's, it's helped us balance the, our budget right now.
You have one more question?
Yeah, one last, so just easy, one, easy one. It's an easy one for you. But for, for grants, so I looked at provincial grants, you know, it looks like we spent about four point eight million, very last page, well, near the last page. But I think we have ten million. Do we have to pay any of that back if we don't use it? And it, do we use ten million? I just get confused because you have two columns there.
And I'm looking at my.
They both look the same. They actually, one says estimates and one says forecast.
Which one, which?
I don't know the difference. It's on appendix B.
Appendix B, thank you.
Page two seventy-six. So we've got the original, that's easy. Then we have revised estimates and then revised forecasts. I don't know.
Maybe I'll, I'll talk just without finding it, at least, I guess the, the real question is, do we have to return the money, right? If, if we have it. The answer is, is no, we do not, unless it's an R E P. So R E Ps, if we don't spend the R E Ps, which are the P P S from the E P Ls, right? We have to return that money if we don't spend it. The G S Ns, we don't, that's our surplus. With the exception being some things like conditionist funding, it's deferred revenue. So it would just go on to our balance sheet as a deferred revenue item. But everything else we would have essentially would be, be part of our surplus at the end of the year.
Okay. Last question is done. We're moving on. Thanks. Thanks for the questions. So our next, thank you, Superintendent Loft, for the report. We shall now move on to item eleven point six, which is Capital Project Reports. A report as of May thirty-first. Superintendent Loft, once again, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Chair, please find attached the information report for H C D S B's major capital projects for the period ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Projects are tracking as anticipated. This report is being submitted as information to trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, we have questions for Superintendent Loft? Trustee Saunders, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, just, I noticed, I mentioned this to, to Superintendent Merrick. I don't see Oakville number three on there. When would we start seeing, you know, allocations for that, that project? Because I think we, we've got a September twenty twenty-seven target date.
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. It'll be when we start spending money on it. So we haven't spent any money on it yet. So when we start spending money on it, it'll go on there and then we'll drive it on there.
All right, thank you. Follow-up question? No? Good. Seeing no other hands up. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for your capital project report. Our next order of business is miscellaneous information, number twelve, twelve point one, student trustees update. Student trustees, please present your report.
All right, so we'll pause a little break for everybody. Lauren, Isabel and I had the great pleasure of working on our final student trustee report for the year. So in the interest of time, we're going to try and skim through it, but we do want to highlight all the important things, especially in the last months of June. On behalf of the student trustees, we'd like to commend all the students in the H C D S B for their exemplary effort throughout the year. We have information here highlighting our twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five student senate, but we want to recognize all of the great work students do throughout the year. Whether it goes specifically recognized, for example, our Student Achievement and Leadership Subcommittee passed an initiative this year where students in their community are able to nominate other students for, I don't want to say just good deeds, but doing good acts in their school that may not always be noticed by administrators or by staff. And it's essentially students celebrating students, which we thought was a really important milestone this year. Additionally, our Environmental Stewardship Subcommittee ran social media campaigns to provide information on environmental activists in Canada. And I'm sure they're very happy to hear about our Energy Efficiency Provincial Ranking this year, because I know that was celebrated a lot last year. And just as student trustees in general, I think I speak on behalf of Lauren, who is being very studious right now, and Isabel, and saying that it's been a pleasure to lead and support the work of all the students throughout this year, and we cannot wait to see what they're doing in the future.
Yeah, so for our believing pillar, you know, as Catholic students, this June, we, as well as Mr. Klein mentioned, we celebrate and dedicate ourselves to the sake of her of Jesus. So this month is a special time to devote ourselves to Jesus' love, mercy and compassion. So as well, many schools are having their end-of-year masses, final prayers, and also their chaplaincy meetings and graduation masses as well, which is leading up to exams, which is a couple of days from now. So good luck to us. And then also symbolizing the end of the year, but also kind of a devotion to learning and kind of continuing our faith in our schools. And then moving on to the belonging pillar, we also, as the end of the year nears, the preparation for next year is beginning with many clubs and mentorship groups as well. So they're also accepting many applications from different students and giving other students the chance to have leadership opportunities in their schools. And in doing so, many clubs and student leaders are really excited to welcome the incoming grade eights by preparing many grade eight days, which will be happening, I'm guessing, in July and August and those kind of times. But this actually creates like a lot of leadership opportunities and welcomes, again, many students into our school board. And then we're also really happy to share that during the month of June, the HCDSP schools are really journeying alongside the 2SLGBTQIA+ community and creating spaces to welcome the students and really create a sense of dignity and justice for all. And again, throughout the month of June, many students had the opportunity to participate in events and learn about different initiatives that we have going on in our schools. So I'll just pass it on to Sophia.
Yeah, and I'll be taking the last pillar of becoming. Throughout the last few months especially, we've had the privilege of attending the AUSTA AGM. So it was Lauren, myself and Isabel, as well as our incoming student trustees, which was really helpful as we were able to gain a large amount of professional development. But it also kind of was a nice way to finish our term, especially for this year, as the incoming student trustees received a lot of sessions that covered important topics such as their role, the Education Act and the history of Catholic education. And in joining the recent network of student trustee alumni, we were also able to connect with former student trustees Gabriela Masari Amar and Katie Bowie, who provided us and our incoming student trustees with wisdom and advice. And just concluding on the topic of alumni, I wanted to take a moment and express the enormous amount of gratitude I have for being able to serve the Halton Catholic District School Board over this last year as a North Halton student trustee. I recently opened my letter for my future self. I wrote it in grade nine when I was at St. Ceteri. And to the prompt, in high school, I'm most excited too. Of course, my answer was get involved. Throughout my journey and in this boardroom, I've had several opportunities to do just that, to experience both growth and learning while making so many amazing memories. To all the students watching online and for all of them who will never know what a student trustee is, I am truly so grateful for each one of you. Without my, without you all, my role would mean nothing as I found great honor in being a megaphone for your student voices at such an important and welcoming table. Thank you to Chair Duarte, Director Klein, Superintendent Del Sordo, all of you trustees and the 2024 to 2025 Student Senate for the opportunity of a lifetime. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll cut that short. I also want to quickly add to that as my own thanks. But, you know, as this is the last board meeting, I'd really like to say how grateful I am to have this chance, to have had this chance to serve as a student trustee. I'm not only a student trustee, but also a student advocate at the board. And so while this year's been pretty hectic, I wouldn't have been being a very terrified student, very terrified for this role, to being very confident in myself and just in different, you know, different landscapes and different places. And I'm just really grateful to have this chance to not only speak up for other students in our school board, but also gain leadership skills and different avenues. And so I really also learned a lot from our AUSTA conferences. And I'm really grateful again to have had the chance to go to those conferences and just learn so much about student advocacy and about, again, being a leader. And it's just, it's been so fruitful to be not only a student advocate, but to also serve in this board and just see how much work everyone puts in behind the scenes. And so I'm really grateful to see, basically, you guys are kind of the, the background of our school and the backbone of our school and so, our schools. So I'm really grateful for that. And I'd like to extend a thank you to all the student, the trustees and all the superintendents. And a special thanks to the Chair of the Board, Mr. Duarte, Director Klein, Superintendent Del Sordo, Del Sordo, this Superintendent Pikaik, along with Mr. Oleo Swenden and Trustee Kristen for really helping me in this journey and really supporting us as student trustees.
Thank you. I'll, I'll pass the floor to Director Klein. But before that, I don't want to be a spoilsport. We have a special board meeting coming up. Director Klein?
And, and regarding that special board meeting, Chair, if you go ahead to 10:36 next week, we'll have only been here two hours. Everybody should know that. So I just want, I'm going to tip it over to Superintendent Del Sordo. And it's a shame that Lauren can't be here. Obviously, she's diligent and working hard. So we're great for that. But on behalf of certainly staff, I'd just like to thank you for doing the work and responding to the, the call to leadership. And we do hope, and it seems like you found it rewarding, and rewarding in a way that's not veneer type of rewarding, but rewarding in a way that you feel that you have done work, that is work, that's glorious work and work that builds a better, a better community. And I can say one thing, and that is, I don't think anybody has ever had any sliver of a doubt that when you do speak, you do, you do at least intend and try to think about speaking on behalf of others. And I know for a fact that you do think about those ones who might not have a voice or might not feel they have the courage or the ability to have a voice. And that is truly doing God's work and that is truly doing something that builds a better, certainly a better school board. For that, we're very grateful and wish you all the best. You guys have so much to do and enjoy, enjoy life. And we eagerly await to hear more about your endeavors. But, Em?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Superintendent Del Sordo.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Honestly, what a pleasure it is to work with three dynamic young women who I had the pleasure of sending a number of videos, saying, you remind me of this powerful woman. You remind me of this, continue to strive. The best part, and I have shared with Director Klein, that I feel most ineffective because I kind of want to jump in and, you know, and help with it, but then I realize it's student leadership. And so the best part is really just watching you all grow and lead and represent the voices and the needs of your peers. So that when you're sitting around this table and you're listening to budgets and you're listening to this, you always ground us and this is what we feel and think and need in our schools. And because of that, you have really impacted the lives of so many. And this I know to be true, as I'm one of the many. So honestly, thank you so much for just allowing me to sit there and watch you and do all the great work that you do. You are incredible women and you're incredible, incredible leaders. And I know that the board is in great hands of achieving, believing, belonging and becoming because of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, on behalf of all the trustees over here, just want to say a big thank you to all our students. Lauren is not here. Hope she listens to the recording. And yeah, I want to wish you all the best in your careers, whichever career paths you choose. And thank you for contributing and bringing the student voice to the table. So really appreciate it. Thanks so much. Okay? With that, we shall now move on to item 12.2, OCSDA update. Trustee O'Han Chenada, please present your report.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. If we could just have it on the screen, that'd be great. We have 20 minutes, so I think we'll go line by line. And we'll discuss and have a lot of fulsome debate through this report. You think I'm joking? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so we'll move on. So background information, it's just how big Oxt is. It represents 29 English Catholic schools, over 575,000 students in more than 1,500 Catholic schools. And Catholic schools have been operating since 1841. You can move on. Thank you. So Oxy Year in Review. So these are the things that they continue to advocate on our behalf, regulatory assistance such as transportation funding, sick leave costs, CPPEI, anti-racism and Indigenous education funding, information technology, cybersecurity, a lot of the things we've talked about so far this evening. Special education, student mental health, school board autonomy and flexibility, which is coming in our face with a few bills that are coming up. School board autonomy, flexibility, capital funding, benchmark costs and executive compensation. A lot of the work that is done at Oxtin through some of the committees that I am a director and thank you for electing me to be director on your behalf in Oxta's core education funding, pre-budget submissions, finance briefs, regulations under Bill 98, which is still, they're advocating for some of these things, electronic meetings, integrity commissioners. And then there's a new one, there's Bill 33 that's at its second read. And that talks about our SROs and many other things that are coming forth with us. We had an AGM, so that's just a follow-up in May. There's presentations that are uploaded to the Oxta website that you can go take a look yourself. There's also a member center. Any kind of correspondence you want to go take a look at, go there as well. We just came back, as Director Klein said, from the CCSTA AGM in Halifax. Really, we are blessed to have publicly funded Catholic education in three provinces in Canada. It's not as evident until you go to one of these functions and you realize how lucky we really are. There are wonderful speakers. They raised over $3,000 for tunis for tuition. I donated the most expensive box of chocolates I've ever had in my, my entire life. I came home with and they were delicious. The copy, copy of the agenda is there. You can go take a look. If you have any questions for me, please. Email, give me a call if you want to have a, you know, any kind of conversations as far as what we can do and how we can advocate. Please feel free. I wanted to just shout out Lauren, who's not here. She did win, very proud. When they announced at our directors' meeting that Lauren McGuire was the one of two student trustee servant leadership scholarship award winner. So we're very proud of Lauren. So wherever you are, Lauren, congratulations, well done. And I know the summer's coming, but September will be here fairly quickly. And I'm very proud as well. The regional meeting for Central will be held at one of our schools, St. Joseph in Paquita. So it's very nice to showcase one of our schools for a change. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well. And don't forget to get your mandatory training done by August 31st. I know I sound like a nag, but I'm sure it'll be posted who did and who did not. So please feel free. If you have any questions about that, please reach out to me as well. And that's all. Any questions, concerns or comments?
Thank you, Trustee O'Han Chenada. Trustees, any questions? No, seeing none. Thank you once again for presenting your report. We shall now move on to open question period. Director Klein, any questions have been submitted?
No, no.
No. Seeing none, we shall now have to go into camera. Yeah, item number 15 in camera. So trustees, we are at a point where we shortly will need to take a vote. So just let's go into camera, finish the business and go. So I need a motion to more of camera. May I have a motion to more of camera? Looking for a mover, please. Sorry. Move into camera, sorry. Trustee Agnew moves, looking for a second, please. Trustee O'Han Chenada, looking for us, all in favor?
Favor.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We shall now log out of the regular board meeting and log into the in-camera session. Thank you. We shall be back.